All right. So I'd like to call the October 17th meeting of the Champlain Valley School District School Board to order. We have at least one adjustment to the agenda, and that would be under Action Matters. I'm going to add 8.2, which would be to appro- or-
Ratify?
Ratify. Ratify the contract that we met, that we came to with support staff last week. That was detailed in the email, which I asked everyone to review again, and then Mark and Russ are going to give us a little more info as well. Is there anything else that people want to add to the agenda? No? Okay.
Hey Dave, just, do people understand that if they have questions on the consent agenda, they should ask you to pull it off now?
If people, if people do have questions on anything on the consent agenda, we can pull it off, and we put it under action items? Or would we?
Yeah.
We would? Okay. So is that a cue that something may need to come off the consent agenda?
It's just good practice.
I put a fair number of things on consent agenda because I know the board has a full agenda, but if there's something that-
Okay.
But hearing none.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Hearing none. Thank you. Hopefully the board's not feverishly looking at the consent agenda right now.
No, hopefully it's not the first time they look at the consent agenda.
No, no, I know. That's right. It's like when you call, when you call customer support for your software, and this is what you hear.
Yeah.
So we'll move to Audience and Communications, and this is an opportunity for anybody in the audience to, to speak to the board. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to take the mic?
Do you want to do introductions at all, Dave? Or not?
Of the board? Or?
Well, I didn't think of that. I didn't know if any, because it's fuller than normal.
Yeah.
So I didn't know if people wanted to-
Well, I wasn't going to put people on the spot if they just wanted to watch, but okay. All right. So hearing none, I'll-
I'm just, Odell, this is not on the agenda, so if you want to talk to the board about your concerns, you should probably all in turn do it now.
Oh, okay. We thought it was on the agenda.
No, I, go ahead.
Okay. From here?
Yeah.
Do we need to get a, okay.
So I'm Odell, and I'm the mother of Milo, Chris Jr. here. And in a nutshell, when Milo first started coming here, and there were just website after website after website that we had to sign onto and open an account, and in order to, for him to play sports after school, in order for me to read his report card, in order for me to sign up to bring dessert for the, you know, principal's lunch, whatever it was. There was just one after another after another, and there's, I just thought, this is just way more passwords, you know, that I can keep track of. But also, why, why are these services being provided by all these outside websites? Can we not actually consolidate some of the, a lot of the information that I was providing for sports, for example? The school already has that information. Why, why do we have to have form relief and fill all of that out and have it funneled to this outside website in order for him to play sports? And so I started kind of looking at some of the privacy policies of some of these companies, like who are these people that I'm giving my information to? And I don't know very much about computers, so I think, okay, the way I find this out is I go to the privacy policies. And actually, some of the people that are providing these services actually only provide that service. That, that is how they make their money. But several of these services that the school uses to facilitate these, you know, to fill these needs, and are, are actually, the service is provided as a tool for data brokers. That's actually what they really do. When, when somebody has a really cool app, it's very, that would help a school, it would, it's very difficult for them to make any money by going, knocking on the door, door to door, school to school, and say, "Buy my app. It would help you. Buy my app." You know? So they go to these, they sell it to data brokers who buy the app, and they, the data brokers sell it to the schools. And that, it's actually a tool to collect data of whoever's using the service. And then it goes, and then the data is monetized. And so for me, this was a surprise, and not, not a pleasant one, to find out that, you know, my data is going, and my son's, and, and also whoever is my emergency contact information, all, all of those people's information is all being funneled through these sites to data brokers, people who monetize this data. And that, that was never the intention that I had when I gave it to the school. I also don't think that there's anything nefarious or malicious on, on the part of the school, that they were set out to, to do this, and maybe didn't even realize that some of these entities are actually data brokers, are tools of data brokers. So I don't, I don't mean to say that I think that the school is, you know, a bad player in this. But I do really think that we need to figure out, do coaches actually need a separate, you know, forms relief, like, do we have to have this other company? The school already has this information. Is there no way that we can say, okay, right now, as I understand it, the school has this information that they collect, and the person who manages the cafeteria, for one, for example, can access certain amounts of his information, but not everything, maybe not his grades, not whatever that they don't need. And other people can access other parts of his data. No, very few people have access to all of it. So why can we not have coaches access what we've already given the school, and it's on the school server? It's, it's not out in the world. So anyway, that, I just wonder, can we not consolidate some of these? This is Milo's in his junior year. We came here when he was a freshman. No school we've ever attended in any other state or any other district has provided, fulfilled services in this way. So I do feel confident that there are other ways to provide these services without incorporating outside, in every case, anyway, outside entities that actually turn out to be data brokers. And so that, that's kind of in a nutshell, my concern. Is there anything I missed? And I'd like, and I volunteered to be a part of, you know, any committee that helps, I don't want to make a complaint or a suggestion without offering also to help with that, and I'm happy to be on any committee that helps vet the services, these providers of these services, or whatever, in any way I can help, to, to help, you know, not have this. I think the school is in a position of trust, and when I give my information to the school, I want to trust that they need it, and I want to trust where it's going. And I feel that, that we need to be able to, some parents might not mind, you know, giving it anywhere. But when, for parents, anybody, there should be, it's not informed consent unless you are informed that it's actually going to a data broker. And so if you want to, be a part of that. Fine. But if, for me, I would say, well, hang on. Maybe not. And so I guess that's, I'm, I'm happy to help vet, I'm happy to help research, I'm happy to help be a part of a solution, but I really, I really feel like something, this needs to be kind of contained more than it is.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments.
Thank you.
I know that you had contacted Elaine in the past few weeks, and she had started, oh, Jean, sorry. And Elaine relayed the info to me.
Yep.
So I know that Mike is, Mike Kemper is working on this and trying to come up with some initial work on it, so-
Yeah, so essentially, it's, thank you for bringing it up, because there really is a problem, and we do need, absolutely need to fix this. It's, we're not alone in this. We contacted the AOE, they are just starting to scratch the surface on this whole issue as well, so we'll reach out to them because it's bigger than just CBU. What we're doing in parallel with reaching out for some, some more firepower to help us with this is going through all of the applications that we have to see what, what exposure, where we are exposing the data, and we'll shut that down as quickly as we can. It, you know, at some point, we'll need a board policy to, you know, we'll have a procedure, what we think is probably what the board would like us to be doing on a regular basis, but we need a policy to see how the board wants to do it in the long run. Those are kind of our three prongs, but the first one right off the bat is to protect our student data right now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great.
Can I just echo Dave's thanks? That was really well researched and well presented. I really appreciate your input, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Parents like you that help make the board even better.
Well, thank you for listening. I really appreciate your time and attention.
I think Jessica-
I was just going to introduce myself, but I'm Jessica Brumstead. I'm a member of the Vermont House that represents Chittenden 5-2, Jones District, and so that's Shelburne, part of Shelburne and St. George. And I'd like to try and come to a few more of these and learn more about what you all are doing, and hopefully be helpful in what we're all doing. But also, just so you know, I'm on the Government Operations Committee, which handles a lot of municipal issues, all kinds of legislative, public oversight, and things like that. And I'm also on an Accountability Committee, which is looking into measuring how we're doing. Are we, are we meeting the goals of the laws that we pass, and are we checking on that and making sure that they make sense and that it adds up in the end? So those are a couple of things that I've been working on right now. And finally, just one of the things that's really, I've been working a lot on is civics in government, and civility in government, and how is one of the ways maybe to have civics in classrooms from all the way down to third grade? So you'll be hearing more about that, and I'm hoping to talk with folks, someone like maybe Jeff Evans at some point about that, so. But anyhow, I just thought I'd let you know I'm here.
Thanks, Jess. Okay. Anything else from the audience? Hearing none, we'll move on to our next topic for tonight, which is trauma-informed systems. And you're going to introduce Joelle.
So I'm going to walk up to Joelle, and let, I was a psychologist that worked with people, things around, kind of, some of the issues that we've been, you as a board and us in our school buildings have been working on for a while. So last month, you watched some excerpts from the film Resilience, talking about ACEs, adverse childhood experiences, and kind of identifying the impact that that can have on students. So Joelle is here to talk to the board a little bit about, now what do we do, knowing that this exists in our schools and our communities, and what can we do to move forward? And as we sort of laid out for you last month, this is part of a series that you'll hear over the course of the year about supporting learners in the building, so thanks, Joelle.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for having me. I thought what I would do is just give you a little bit of information about the work that I'm doing, and then we could maybe spend most of the time with my answering your questions. And just so that you know, I've sent ahead a document that you have access to. You don't need to look at it now, but it provides kind of a summary of my approach to this work, so that you'll have that as a reference point later. So I have worked in Vermont as a psychologist for almost 20 years, and during that time, I've worked in outpatient mental health, doing family therapy, as well as short-term. I was the program director for about six years of the NFI Hospital Diversion Program, which is a short-term inpatient crisis program for teens across the state. And also have worked for about 15 years with a long-term residential program called Allenbrook, which is in South Burlington. And then throughout that whole time, have worked with schools. About four and a half years ago, I became self-employed and have spent the majority of my time in that, since then, working in contracts with schools, and I'm still with Allenbrook because it's my baby. I have two birth children and then a group home. That's how I think about it. So, um, so the work I do with schools now, I have contracts with several school districts to provide psychological evaluations, consulting, and training, and a bulk of that work is trauma-specific. I also work with students with autism and other learning and mental health challenges. So right now, I have projects with, if I can remember all of them, Colchester School District, Milton School District, Essex Westford, Chittenden East, South Burlington, Franklin West, Franklin Northwest. And in all of those schools, I'm doing an ongoing multi-year project that's specific to creating trauma-informed schools. And then this year, I'm doing a project for the Agency of Education, which is a pilot project for trauma-informed schools. And there's three schools participating in that pilot project, and those schools are Green Street in Brattleboro, Linden Town, and Newport City. So what I thought, that's sort of a very brief summary of the work that I do, and what I thought I would do is just kind of let you know my approach. And so I've come up with kind of a roadmap for how a school district would become trauma-informed. And the first thing to think about is that any system, whether it be a town, or a school, or any community that wants to become trauma-informed, the entire time that that system exists, you would work toward that effort of being trauma-informed. It's never something that you could say, "Check that box. We did that." It's, it's kind of an ongoing effort. So when I think about the roadmap to becoming trauma-informed, the first thing I would suggest is that instead of really our core central focus being on trauma, I would suggest that it be on resilience. So it's really important that we increase the awareness of that community and the impact of trauma, but equally important is that we increase the awareness of that community on what are the resilience factors? How can we help our students become more robust and strong to any of the stressors or challenges that they face? So what's happened since I've kind of shifted my work from being really focused on increasing people's awareness of the impact of trauma, as I've shifted it over to really interweaving that information into what the research shows us about the essential factors of resilience, what's happened is the conversation has become relevant to 100% of the students. So now we no longer have to worry about who in the classroom, or who in our schools has endured trauma, or who is this relevant to? When we look at the essential kind of features of what makes a student or a person resilient, then we can offer strategies and interventions that are relevant to everybody, and essential to those students and members of our community who are most vulnerable. So now, instead of saying that we have trauma teams, now we talk about having resiliency teams, and we talk about a whole kind of class and focus on resilience. So the way that I kind of work through that is, first of all, try to change the language to be more resilience-focused. And then some of the kind of tasks that we go through have to do with providing in-service trainings for all of the staff to help increase, you know, professional development and information. Then we have informational discussions, not necessarily full-blown in-service trainings, but informational discussions with, like, the custodial staff, the coaches, substitute teachers, administrative staff, bus drivers, food service staff, anybody who works in the school system that interfaces with children and community members, would have some level of information about resilience and trauma. And then what I do is look at developing a core team, and the idea with the core team is that that would be a group of people in the school district, or in the school, that would have, like, the principal, school counselor, school nurse, regular educator, special educator, those kinds of people that would form a core team, and we call that team then the resiliency team. And that team, each year, is going to gradually assume the role of, like me, someone like me, the consultant, so that the school is becoming self-reliant in this endeavor. So year one, I would have, or someone in my role, would have sort of a big presence in terms of providing in-service trainings and going to faculty meetings and offering information. And then each year, this core team is going to take on more and more of that role, and I gradually phase myself out. So now, in some of the school districts that I just listed, where I'm in year four, I'm there very infrequently, and the, and the schools that I'm in year one, I'm there kind of all the time. So that's kind of how that works. Let's see, other points. So there's always a goal to have parent and student involvement, in terms of thinking about, like, a focus group with students, or bringing the information to community dinners. Just last week, I was at a community dinner in Milton, and we showed the Resilience movie, and then we facilitated a discussion to get the community involved in terms of how, how that school's becoming trauma-informed. We look at developing a staff resource library. So on the staff website, there's usually a resource section, and in that, I put folders that has articles and tools under each category of the training that we do, so the staff can access that after. And then in terms of resource library, we also do a project with the librarian, where we have a committee, and we look at, can every child in the school community find their story in the school, in the school library? Meaning, if a child has endured food insecurity, or homelessness, or foster care, or the death of a parent, or a parent who's been incarcerated, can every child find their story in the library? And then, of course, not every child wants to find their story in the library. Sometimes they want to go to the library to read, you know, fantasy or different things, but it, it makes you feel even more unique and different if your story isn't even located in the library. So that's like an example of a more detailed project that we would do. So the core team, then, over time, they become the consultants for the school community. And we look at that team providing new hire training each year as their staff turnover, and looking at kind of interweaving the information on trauma-informed schools into policy decisions and practices that the school has over time. So it kind of keeps it alive. If you go and do one really brilliant in-service training, people will be fascinated, but then you don't really change that system. So the idea of a roadmap is thinking about how would you really, over time, change that system? We collect data, so we do surveys at the beginning and end of each year, and then mostly what I do to measure efficacy of the project is look at pre-existing data. So we look at attendance, on-time arrival, special education referrals, discipline referrals, nurse visits, and of course, academic performance, and look to see if, each year that we're doing the project, did those numbers improve? And they do. In one of the schools that I've worked in, the special education referrals went from double digits down to single digits within three years, which the principal feels is directly related to the project. So we kind of think of like a top-down, bottom-up approach. The top-down approach is full staff in-service trainings and discussions and information to increase awareness, and the bottom-up approach is student-specific. So that would be evaluations and consultations for specific students who are identified as needing more support or consultation, and we apply the information to those specific students, and everybody that's involved with that student then gets a good example of how would we use these ideas to support a specific student, so that information then kind of works up that way. So that was a lot of information at once. That's kind of a, kind of a sketch overview. I'm happy to answer questions, talk more about any part of that. Yeah.
Yeah, I had a question. So you mentioned that you had more like community-parent engagement.
Mm-hmm.
Is there, is that woven in the plan when you kind of hand things off to the staff and the teachers? Is that part of it, that each year, every quarter, I don't know what it is, but there'll be that parent, like, pulling in, the new parents especially, I'm thinking, like, you have one year, and then the next year, you'll have new parents, new kids, that sort of thing? Like, how do you get that kind of, you know, peripheral school community with the parents engaged in subsequent years?
Yeah, yeah. It's a great question. Every school, every school district is different. You know, I look at, I'm a family therapist, so I look at every school system as like a big family, a big system, and they're all unique and have their own unique styles. So for example, in Milton, there's a monthly community dinner that's remarkably well-attended. Of all the schools I've worked in, I've never seen a community that can bring their families out. They provide food and childcare, and it's well-attended. So our idea there is that at least once a year, this would be the topic, and what we did this year is we showed resilience, and then we talked about that. And so we'd like to figure out how to keep that on their regular agenda. An idea that we have in the works for another school district is that they're open house. We want to have a table with some information about the resilience training that the staff is, is doing, and a flyer, and so that hopefully, as people are going around through open house, they might come up and talk to us about the work that the teachers are doing. Those are the two ideas that we've come up with so far. I, I would say that on that roadmap that I just defined, the student focus group and the parent involvement is the part that we, I've done the least with, but I feel, now that I am kind of have my feet under me with this project, I'm the most invested in, in building that. Yeah.
So you said that you've switched it, instead of being trauma-informed, because that may not apply to everybody, to resiliency-informed.
Yeah.
And I'm looking at our, our policy that we're going to talk about tonight on wellness, and I'm probably taking a very well-defined, like, technical federal term, wellness, but it seems like those two, resiliency and the wellness, would interact and would be one, be part of the same program, or have you worked with that? Has that been something that you've incorporated, or?
Yeah, that's a great question. I, whenever I'm doing this, I wish that the principals of these schools were here with me, because they would answer that question better. Sometimes we've put it under a culture or climate initiative, sometimes I think they have put it under wellness. One school paid for the work and connected it under a homeless family initiative that they had, so I feel like schools have done so many different things. Most of my work is grant-funded, except for the evaluations I do are special education-funded, but the training and all that work is typically grant-funded. The resiliency piece would definitely go under wellness, and what we look at in, in that effort is that our students in general, and our families and our communities in general are more stressed than they were 10 or 15 years ago, and we can see evidence of that in terms of their ability to access education and be available for education. So if we reduce the stress level more intentionally of all the students, they'll be better community members to the more vulnerable students anyway, but they'll also be healthier. And every student, the research that they did at Harvard, what that shows is that you have a whole community of students, and some of those students are thriving, some of those students are doing fine, and some are really struggling and quite vulnerable. And when you teach explicit skill development in four protective areas for resilience, which are social support, emotional regulation, social competency, and executive functioning, when you explicitly improve those skills in all the students, these students who are thriving and doing fine do even better, and the students who are struggling and really vulnerable start to progress and develop and make gains. So basically, you don't waste anybody's time. It's relevant to everybody, and for some people, it's beneficial, and for some people, it's essential. Yeah.
So in your work, do the, you talked about the two levels, when you're working with, at a whole faculty level, say, are you, are they getting training in, in those resilience factors to not just the awareness level?
Right. Yeah. So the, the first part of the training, it's best if it happens in, like, at least three half-days, right? Or, or more. So the first part is, what is the impact of toxic stress on a student's development, which includes trauma, but isn't just specific to trauma? And then what is the science of resilience? How do we help people be more resilient? So that's component one. And then the whole rest of the work is those four areas. What does that mean, and how can we actually improve that in our, for our students, in terms of a lot of strategies and approaches? Yep. Yeah.
You mentioned that you'll be working with faculty to teach them how to build resilience in the student body. What will students actually see?
Yeah, that's a great question. So what students would, would know, like, they might be more aware of the fact that, like, if you're, for example, learning how to give a presentation or do a debate, the student, or the teacher would tell you what executive functioning skills you're also practicing, and how those might be relevant to your future. For example, self-monitoring is an executive functioning skill. Right now, I'm self-monitoring. I have a goal, and I'm providing information that I've thought about ahead of time, and while I'm doing that, I'm paying attention to what you're doing. You're looking at me, and you're nodding. If you started to look confused or upset, I would change my behavior so that I could keep your interest, and that's a self-monitoring skill. It's very helpful in all facets of life. So if I were a teacher who had learned information about resilience, I would tell you about the project, what the academic content was, and what the executive functioning skill was that I wanted you to practice, and we would break that down and really think about what that meant, and then we would be more intentional about, about all of that.
So it'll be on a one-to-one level, in the sense that teachers are working directly with each student outside of give a presentation, for example, rather than large groups, rather than a presentation on resiliency, or- than a presentation on resilience at large groups?
Oh, great question. It's universal in the sense that I would want the teacher to be talking to the whole class about that, but I wasn't, I have not necessarily had teachers teach about resilience to students, except for in our, I work with one school district that has some alternative classrooms, and those students are in a smaller classroom setting within the bigger school, and those students are getting a lot of information about resilience and a lot more direct teaching. But we could do that. We could certainly teach the students about resilience and, you know, and get their input in that. I haven't done that yet. Now I'll start.
So were you saying that as a component of resilience was self, is self-monitoring?
So one of the, of the four components, executive functioning is the fourth, and self-monitoring is an example of an executive functioning skill.
Okay. So I guess I was thinking, like, it sounded to me like when you were giving that example to Thomas, like, a teacher would say, okay, we're going to do this exercise today, and this is what it's going to involve, and this will exercise this particular, you know, you're going to work on self-monitoring because, you know, I'm trying to explain this and you're nodding your head, and, you know, so, like, that does sound like a group exercise of a teacher working with a class on coming up with some of the components of resilience.
Right, right. And I try to have the teachers really pick and hone in on one thing. Like, for example, at Georgia Elementary and Middle School, I work with that school pre-K to eight, and we identify as a cohort at the end of the year. What's a strategy? When you think about resiliency skills, as a cohort, what do you feel like this grade could really work on? And we identified, for example, for the seventh grade at the end of last year, they could really work on self-regulation. So when they're in the hall without an adult, that they could self-manage through that transition without getting into trouble. When they have an iPad and they're being asked to do a project, that they would stay on task, and they wouldn't veer to other things. So now, for, as I'm starting eighth grade with that, we're focusing intentionally on self-management with that grade, and we're talking to them about what that is. So we're really not trying to take on the whole world at once. We're trying to focus in on what we think would be like the most bang-for-all buck and essential for that, for that group. So like, the sixth grade, they have perseverance up on the boards, and they relate a lot of what they do to perseverance. So a student wants to quit a math quiz after the second one, and the whole group would talk about perseverance, and how would you persevere if you feel like this is an impossible task? What do you need? Rather than just looking at that as a naughty behavior that will consequence, what do you need to persevere? Do you need water? Do you need a walk? Do you need a break? Do you need to do five instead of 20? But giving up isn't really an option, and it's a group kind of effort.
Okay. Yeah, Jo.
When you focus on resilience, it doesn't matter what the student or the faculty member's experience is, because you're not paying as much attention to a specific comment. You're focusing on resilience for them. So is it a smoother delivery? Is it easier for you or someone in your role to interact and be effective?
It's much easier, so I want to say two things to that. One is, I try really hard to not sugarcoat or lose sight of the impact of trauma with, in terms of training, because I want to do that topic justice. It really is important that the faculty understand how experiences of trauma might impact students, but the whole strategy and the whole approach is about resilience, and it's much smoother. Like, I don't think at open house, I could have a table that says "trauma." No one would come and talk to me, right? But I can have a table that says "resilience," and are you curious what your school is learning about resilience? And people come up, and they're curious and interested. And what would happen for the, I've been working on this effort for over 10 years, and in the first few years, when I focused a lot on what's the impact of trauma, what's the impact of trauma, at the end of the training or the effort, the faculty would come up to me, and they would always say, that was really interesting, you were really funny. No, I'm just kidding. They would say, that was great. What do you want me to do? And how do I know who this is relevant to? And there was a stuck point in terms of actually them jumping in with suggestions, and since I've shifted an interwoven awareness of toxic stress or trauma into resilience, that has not, that has stopped happening. People are saying now, if, you know, tomorrow morning I have ideas that I can kick into gear, so it's been, it has unstuck the effort, yeah.
Well, the adverse childhood experiences has opened up, I think, a world to people that we didn't have.
Right.
And it's not brand-new, but it's opened up.
Right. Yeah, I'm very grateful for that movie and that effort, because it has brought, I, it's brought the conversation out in a much broader way, yeah.
Is this a change from sending kids to the planning room and rather, you know, sort of, if there's a behavior, sort of like debugging it and working together in a classroom, rather than just take, if someone's got something that's disrupting the class, you don't just send them out, you sort of work as a group to try and solve the problem?
Yeah.
Either specifically to that, or just like through a broad-level initiative through the year to improve that? I mean, is that, is that what you're trying to replace here, or try to improve?
That does happen, and I don't want to imply that I'm just asking teachers to have a higher tolerance for disruption. I'm not doing that, yeah.
That's not what I meant.
Right, and what's, what's happening is, like, for example, in one school, when, five years ago, as we were just starting the project, the behavior interventionist has a room, and he was spending all of his time receiving students receiving students, and now the number of students that are referred to him has dropped so much, that he said about 60 to 70% of his time, he's out in the classrooms doing proactive work, and then about 30 to 40% of the time, he's in his room receiving students and supporting them. And the basic idea is that if you have a group of people, and they have norms and rules for their group, like, you're a group and you have norms and rules, and if you feel that you belong to that group, then you're intrinsically, internally, you're inspired to follow the norms and rules of the group, because you feel like you belong, and that would be like a church community, or a sports team, or this group, any group. And it's the same for a classroom, so if you feel like you belong, then you pay attention to the norms and rules, and you want to follow them. But if you feel like you don't belong or fit in, then you feel like you're outside, and if you do something naughty and the response is that you're out, it just reinforces that you don't belong, and it actually reduces your desire to follow the norms and rules of the group. So it actually increases the frequency of behavior problems when we continually bump people out. Now, if you're, if you do something unsafe or disruptive, you may have to be out for the good of the group, and that sometimes has to happen, and we still do that, but the idea is that now that that person's out, that's not the intervention, that was, that was a way to stabilize the situation. Now the intervention with that student and the community starts with how are we welcoming them back? How are we helping that group of people understand what happened, and that person is a member of our community? Their behavior is unacceptable, but they are absolutely part of our community. How do we welcome them back in? And how does that person feel like we're thinking about you and you're part of us when you're out? And when we take that cultural shift approach, then kids feel a sense of belonging and connection, and there's tons of data on school connectedness, and how much, you decrease a ton of risk behaviors if kids feel connected to school, and you increase their academic performance and their success in lots of ways.
That's good. Any other questions? Anyone in the audience have any questions? No? No? Okay. Thank you so much for coming.
Yes.
This is great to learn about.
Yeah, you're welcome. I did a small project with Heinsberg School this year, so if you wanted to talk with them, too, with that school, I was there a little bit.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for your interest.
All right. So we'll move on to reports to the board, and start with the committee reports. And Kelly, do you want to talk about communications before you?
I have my plate.
Yeah? Is there anything?
Happening with our communications group? We had a meeting again last month, and I think we have a really great work plan, as I commented in our last meeting here. We are on schedule for our next letter to the editors in the local newspapers. There is a Facebook page set up that's gaining some traffic, I think, and I wanted actually to make this point to you all. I don't know how many of you use Facebook, but what I did on my own personal site was I, we all have different local communities, and I basically invited my local community to like our Facebook page, so maybe we could all just look. And to my surprise, almost all of them did, which is really different. I wonder if Kelly, the school board person, said it, would they have done it? But because I was their friend, they did, so that's just a hint. But, yeah, I think that's it. We're reaching out still with community activities and trying to find ways to interact with the fair and broader community, and that's been going, so.
And we're also working with the finance committee on this budget forum that is two weeks, two weeks from today. It's going to be here in place of our committee meetings. Everybody nodding and remembering that? Okay, okay. So, yes?
You segued. I emailed, I can't remember, Kelly and Lynn, and I may have included you, budget buddies? How are we going to get them? And last year, we kind of scrambled. You didn't want, don't want to scramble this year, especially since we're going to have some seats open in March. So that's how I became a board member, I was a budget buddy.
Yeah, and I emailed back, right? And I talked to Barbara, and we've talked about maybe putting it on the agenda, and she had also emailed to you about that, had she?
Yeah, I also wanted to raise the awareness here at this level and see what people were thinking, and I just want to make sure we get.
Ahead of it, yeah.
I mean, the most effective way of getting a budget buddy is for one of you to tap somebody on the shoulder and say, but you need to coordinate that, because we don't want 12 budget buddies. You have 12 board members, you don't need.
I think I'm overflowing. I've been asking.
Yeah, but I think that is the best way to get a budget buddy, is to tap somebody on the shoulder and say, hey, I think you'd really enjoy this.
How many did we have last year? Did we have three or four? You were one.
June was one. I'd say three or four.
There was one from Melissa.
Jane and John.
Yeah, John, yeah.
John's moved, so I can't.
And then, who did we have?
Alice Brown.
Alice from Shelburne, yeah.
Did we have somebody from Shelburne?
Yes.
Oh, of course, Alice Brown. Yeah, okay. All right. So I'm.
Well, that would be a great point, because part of this budget forum was that we do, is the response to last year's, right? That we put the budget together so quickly, some of the community felt that it wasn't really, they didn't have an opportunity to speak or hear or flush through the process. So really, to try to meet that, this year, I would encourage anybody who has a budget buddy in mind to invite them along to that budget forum meeting and start the process.
That's a good idea. Or at least, you know, invite them to come if they're interested, and we'll do that.
And we will be starting with budget topics at the November 14th meeting, so.
Yeah, so it's coming.
Should we try to have a budget buddy coordinator? So, because when you have like 12 or 13 chefs in the kitchen, there's like nobody responsible for cooking and a little chaos.
That's a good idea.
Sure, have them contact me. I'll do that.
Yeah, okay.
I'll do that.
Okay, cool.
That's fine. What, Russ?
I'm just going to ask if the manager will volunteer.
As I was saying this, I'm like, am I putting my foot in my mouth?
No, I think, that's fine. I can do that.
Okay, good.
Yep. Okay. Thanks, Kelly.
Thanks.
Finance, budget, and facilities, Lynn.
Well, this is, does anyone have any questions on what we did at the last meeting? We had this discussion at the, at the, our committee. What do you want, what do you want to hear about report outs from the committee meetings? Because we, and I'm not saying this to be flip, but we put everything in the, in the minutes of what we did, so if anyone has any questions, I guess I can answer questions, or?
And then the meat of what your work, the meat of your work is?
Is coming up.
Seven point two as our budget, so.
In a few minutes, so. Well, come on, in a few minutes. But if anyone had any questions about any of the other pieces.
I do think we need conversations, because when I'm alone with the figures, I don't do that, but to have conversations, a thought might be raised that somebody else is thinking about that I'm not. So I think it, somewhere in that, we raised questions last time, Eric, that maybe I didn't think of, or somebody else didn't think of, and so that format, I don't know if that's what you were meaning.
Well, I guess.
It's here written, so that's it.
Well, I guess I was kind of like, if you had questions about what we talked about in the committee meeting, what we wrote in our report, I can address that. Nothing has happened between then and now, so I'm not sure what you want to hear from me, is what I'm saying, is what is the purpose of this piece of the agenda?
Yeah, I guess if there's really important work that you stumbled upon in the last meeting, you know, make it known, if there's stuff that.
That's outside of, that wouldn't be in the committee meeting minutes.
Well, even if there's something you really want to highlight, you know, because the community forum was in our minutes, but we just want to make sure that everybody knows and.
We're talking about the budget.
Yeah.
Just a few minutes. That's the really big important piece.
And I think that's why it's, you know, it's a week for you where most of your work in committee is item seven point two, so that's totally fine.
I don't mean to be flip about it. I'm just, I don't want to waste time.
The format is really useful.
The format.
The format of the minutes is really useful.
That was, that's Brendan, he did that.
Wow.
So that means your task was being the minutes.
Well, hang on, I was late submitting, so that negates me doing that again.
That is helpful. But it's actually an interesting point. There are things that we discuss that are not on the agenda, so maybe not this week, but maybe other months, we're discussing something that we've discussed in committee that's not on the agenda.
Well, actually, there are two items on the, on the, there's one item on the consent agenda that we did talk about in the committee meeting, but now it's under the. Okay.
All right. Okay. Russ, human resources and labor relations.
Any questions?
Yeah. I know some of your work we're going to cover under eight point two, but.
We actually had a pretty blank agenda at our last meeting. One of the topics was, of course, the reopening of the healthcare piece of the support staff contract, and we do have an action item on that, and we'll talk more to that later. Mark is working on trying to schedule some meetings with various members of the association. These are the three committees that were agreed to in our contract with the teachers, and I don't think we've got anything scheduled yet, but we're trying. So that was pretty well it, and we'll talk more about the support staff contract in a few minutes.
Okay. Great. Elaine?
Well, first, I would like to, this was in the kudos, but like to congratulate Tom Daley, he's a semifinalist in the National Merit Scholarship. Good for you.
Thank you.
That's really great. And Megan, maybe you could speak about, you've got a couple pieces in there around early ed, and maybe you could like highlight each one of them. I think the numbers of the early ed students that we've got in our system.
So I put a chart in the update around just participation rates in Act 166, Early Learning Partnership, which most of you know is publicly funded, pre-K, 10 hours a week. We have significantly high participation, and you can see the difference from back under Act 62, when this was voluntary. We had about 108 students, and we serve as of, when this went to print, about 372, three, four, and five-year-olds are accessing pre-K. We have 47 partner programs, which is significant. We have partners in Chittenden, Addison, Franklin County, and a couple of stragglers, even in a bigger circle around there. So our numbers are significant. We serve a lot of kids. I also think we have the benefit of a pretty solid collaboration with our early learning partnerships, which is maybe different from other areas of the state. We, we have quarterly meetings with the, with those 47 partners, so we do shared professional development. There's a lot of conversation happening about early ed in general, and I think, you know, there are things that are difficult around implementation of Act 166. There have been a few things that I highlighted that we've had to kind of wrap our heads around this year, but overall, we have a really robust program. We serve a lot of kids, and some of our communities, about four years ago, we analyzed how many kids were accessing pre-K. Some of our communities, it's 80. Some of our communities, it's 85 to 90 percent, and it always has been, but in other communities, there were pretty low percentages of kids accessing pre-K, and those percentages have doubled and in some cases tripled. So we really are reaching more kids. And the other piece that I would highlight is we continue to work on our early multi-tiered system of support. So with those 47 partners, we have the opportunity to impact the learning of kids long before they come into our school, even kids that struggle, that maybe aren't eligible for special education services. So Shelley Henson directs our early MTSS grant team. She works with several partner programs who are going through a series of professional development modules. And we're trying to evolve our MTSS even beyond the scope of the grant, so we can think about how would we identify kids early, and how do we support programs? Because in the K-12 realm, we start with what's good first instruction, and what do we do to prevent eligibility for special ed? And we're really trying to mimic that in the early ed world. And I also think that there are some really exciting things happening around early childhood special education in terms of where we're providing services and partnerships with community-based programs and very robust school-based programs. You'll remember that two years ago, well, this is the second year, actually, we combined the Charlotte-Hinsburg programs because of very declining enrollment in one of the towns, and are now doing some really innovative and pretty sophisticated things in terms of service delivery. So it's really exciting. There's a lot going on in early ed.
So Megan, because you've got the mic right there, maybe you could make the linkage between Joelle's presentation tonight and the work that the board did last spring with David Melnick.
Yep.
And what we're doing in our schools.
Yep. So, and I thought about jumping in, but I didn't want to kind of interrupt Joelle's presentation. I think it was really helpful for her to spell out the next step part of the work, and I think it's important for the board to know that that next step work has and is going on in our district and has been for a number of years. Dave Melnick, who you saw as part of the panel last year, is actually a former colleague of Joelle's, and he's been working with all of our K-8s. I believe he's actually worked with CDU as well. Williston is in its second or third year of doing the work that she outlined. Shelburne is in its second year. Charlotte is in its first year, second year, I think, actually. So all of our K-8 buildings have been working on this path to becoming trauma-informed and then thinking about what is it that we do? And when you think about multi-tiered systems of supports, that last example she gave of kind of how we think about kids when they're struggling and when they have to leave, but then how do we welcome them back, that's first instruction in that area, and those are the types of things that are happening right now. So as she points out, that work's never over, but we, we have been spending a lot of time and energy on that, and we'll continue to.
Thanks. I'd also point out that in the CULT report, on the first page, there is a hot link to statewide ratios, and that is a document that Rebecca Holcomb, Secretary Holcomb, released a couple weeks ago. It's really interesting to go through that and see, it gives you FY '16 ratios and FY ' '17 ratios. Chittenden, Champlain Valley School District is above the average, and while Jean reminds me that two years does not a trend make, the trend is going in the right direction, right?
But I mean, it's, we're not just above average, we're very well above average. I mean, they're trying to get people from 4.2 kids.
2.3. There's schools that's 2.3.
I know, but the average, they'd like to see people go from 4.2 up to five kids per staff member. And we're at 7 to 8.2.
Yep. Yeah, we were happy with the way that came out.
We're educating 77 to 110 percent more kids per staff member than the average.
How do we compare to the rest of the country? You know, similar, non-urban.
So I, I don't know. I know, we don't have that data. I mean, maybe somebody does, but I don't have that.
Yeah.
You know, because it's all a matter of like comparing apples to apples. So this particular data set does not include bus drivers, lunch workers, custodial staff. It is instructional. So it's all the other people, all of us, all the teachers, all the parents, everybody in the schools. So that's what they're comparing. So when we start looking at other states, it depends on how, what they include in their numbers, so.
Yeah, you have to find a source that's already normalized for a data set that's comparable, right? I mean, otherwise, nobody would publish national data if they were doing apple store oranges.
Yeah, yeah. Yep, I don't know.
That's a good question. Thanks.
Do we know, so that total number, 372 right now for total enrollment? So you talked a little bit about percent and things going up and down, so do we know of how many would be eligible in our whole district, roughly? Yes. So that's a good question, and I don't have that calculation for this year. When, the last time we did that calculation, which actually spurred us to launch our early ed leadership team, it's what prompted Williston to bring on an outreach person in early ed, we were estimating that we were finding, locating about 40 percent of early ed kids. So roughly, and we did that by estimating what the size of a kindergarten class is and how many kids we had, and doing the math. So we've not recalculated that, but what, but we have an individual school, or individual towns, and, you know, one of our lowest towns had about 25 to 30 percent identification rate, and they're well over 50 percent now. So I think if we were to redo that number, I'd hate to estimate it, but I'm certain that we're, you know, between 50 to three-quarters percent. And not all of those kids are attending programs that are ELP partners, but they are accessing pre-K. So those numbers are going in the right direction, and then we still have to figure out what about that last chunk of kids who isn't accessing. And, you know, some percentage of that might be families who don't opt to, but probably a larger percentage is families that don't have access and, and can't. Those are some of the challenges that the state also is looking at related to Act 166.
And it's the volunteer, voluntary to put.
Exactly.
And so some, as with their partners that are high-quality childcare facilities in home and centers.
Right. I mean, there is still that challenge of, for families who need full-time, full-day care. There are, you know, there are families who access pre-K and childcare subsidy and can, but there are other families who can't pay the difference between that 10 hours in a high-quality center, or it's not geographically close to where they work or whatever. So, you know, there's still work to do, but it's, the percentage is going up.
Good. Anything else?
Not on that, unless anybody has any questions. Yeah, Joan?
I just have one thing, the last paragraph with Mike Camper connecting, I would suggest that connect with Heinsberg and Williston reps as well, we're all Champlain Valley.
Where are you, Joan?
It's listed, the last page after the box, it says Mike Camper, and it says.
Yes. Okay, so that's where they do the hosted services.
The two Shelburne reps and the Charlotte rep, but Williston and Heinsberg are not listed.
Right, so if they web reach out to me proactively and Robin Schubert, so this was good meeting by Dick and Jessica and Mike.
But for that information, they don't have to participate or whatever, but to know it, I think is.
Mm-hmm. Good idea. Okay.
Consistent.
All right. So next would be moving on to this.
Presentation.
Or are you?
Any questions about the principal's report, reports? Please make a note on the pink sheets at the end of the day, if there are things that, you know, you have either questions or suggestions.
All right.
Want to make sure they're informative and, sure, you can.
I had one plug for one principal, which is, I sent out a note yesterday, I think, to all of you, just wanted to make sure you got it, that we're doing an open house in Shelburne to give people an opportunity to walk around the new space and see everything and talk to staff members, and we're going to have kids lead the tours, like talk to kids in the space and stuff like that. And it's, it's exciting because we're trying to get not just a bunch of parents in there of kids, but we're trying to reach out and get as many folks in town to come see the building. Because what is the number, Barbara Ann? It's, there's, for every parent in our town, we have seven other taxpayers that don't have kids in school, and we want them to see the space as well. So you guys are all welcome. I know Kevin was really excited, and he's moved because he's renovating the school. You guys are all welcome. Appreciate you guys showing up.
Tell them about the fabulous prizes.
Oh, yes. And we would like, I will remind you that you're eligible to win.
Fabulous prizes?
Fabulous prizes from, I don't know, maybe somebody who works at Burton and.
Somebody who might own Archie's.
And another former board member who may own a hamburger restaurant in Shelburne, own as Archie's.
That's what's bringing me there.
And we will have cider doughnuts inside.
That's what's pretty amazing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. They better get at least some of the ones with the sugar on them.
And why don't you say it's Tuesday, October 24th? Right?
Tuesday, 24th, yeah. Yep. A week from today.
Yeah.
Great. Okay. So with that, we will move on to our presentation of the essential arts.
Do you want to talk a little bit about contextualizing this whole year and the purpose of these presentations?
So remember when we were not merged, all of our schools did a three-year cycle of presentations? The idea being that school board members would be the smartest people in their communities about how the school system works, next to, obviously, the people who work directly in the system. And the three-year cycle that we've had is academic rigor, co and extracurricular activities include essential arts and student support services. So this year, the cycle is around what we've all agreed we would call the essential arts. We had different names for this, but PE, music, art, world language, what am I missing? Any one of them? Those are the essential arts now across the district. So tonight, Jeff's going to do an overview of what we're going to be doing in this year, the different areas that we will be covering. He's going to share, like, what does the research say about the importance of these essential arts in the curriculum for students? And we have some students who are going to be here also.
We hope so.
Believe, we're expecting.
We told them to start at 7:20, so.
Yeah, so they'll be coming in.
Yes. Thank you, Elaine. And the goal here is, this is a very different approach, as Elaine alluded to, so now we have to coordinate teachers from all the schools or the disciplines to come and speak to you, and we thought it would be a really good idea, this first one, to create the backdrop for all that work. And in the past year, we've done quite a bit of work in these areas in terms of coordinating and collaborating. So I wanted to set the stage a little bit about the work they've done, some of the things I'm sharing with you. And Adam did line up a few students, I think I'll speak to you about some of their experiences with the things I'm going to share with you. We'll see. And I may have to put you two on the spot.
I'd love to talk about music, so.
And I want to point out the irony that I'm the one speaking about, about essential arts, and yet Emily Mitchell's sitting right there and taking notes, and should probably be the other guy. But nonetheless, I'm sorry, Emily McLean, that'd be great if I got you ready next time.
That would be interesting.
Yeah. Yeah, it would be really interesting. Okay. So these are the areas we're going to talk about, and again, it depends on what school you're in in terms of how they actually categorize them, but we're going to talk about the arts, visual, dramatic, graphic, tech, and music, wellness, and world language, which we've had, it has on students' education, their learning, and their lives. And the first thing I was going to do is just share a few points of research and data that we found, and some quotes. Start with PE. What I did was I found a lot of connections between these experiences and cognition, academic performance, and engagement. And I'm not going to read everything to you, but I'll point out just a few things. Here, they're talking about the different studies that have been done to make those connections. And here at the bottom, one of the things that really struck me was the connection between children's health and engagement. And so education reform will be ineffective unless children's health is made a priority. Schools may be the only place where health inequities can be addressed, and if children's basic health needs are not met, they'll struggle to learn regardless of the effectiveness of the instructional materials used. And it connects to the resilience of conversations we've decided as well. And I do want to go through these pretty quickly, so we can share some things, some examples, and some other thoughts. So in the arts, similar, plenty of research out there that makes those connections for us. Guggenheim showed a link between arts education and improved literacy. Many public school districts are finding connections between arts and fewer disciplinary infractions and increased grad rates and attendance and test scores. And Rand Corporation study, one of its conclusions was that arts education can help close the gap between socioeconomic groups, creating a more level playing field between children who may not be exposed to these enrichment experiences outside of school and their more privileged peers. Thank you. Excellent. And world language, we will also, you'll also hear from those folks at one point during the year. And again, the connection with cognition, with academic performance, in this case, reading. And also, this one, developing empathy and cultural awareness. Studying another language, any other language, will help you understand the issues faced by Americans who speak languages other than English, will help you understand the immigrant experience, may help you understand your neighbor, your family, or yourself. And look at the world, America is less isolated and the world is more interconnected than ever. Thank you. So another thing I want to point out is it's not just the research that indicates that these are extremely valuable experiences and a necessary part of an educational trajectory, but also the state and EQS, for 2020, everybody has to start graduating students, as you well know, on their ability to be proficient or deep proficient on whatever grad standard you have. And the state wrote up a boilerplate policy, and two years ago, the CDU policy adopted this, tweaked it some, and this is just the first paragraph of it, but as you can see, the highlighted areas, the state expects students to demonstrate proficiency in literacy, math, scientific inquiry, and the ones we'll talk about throughout this year, global citizenship. Folded into that is world language. And physical education, artistic expression. And later it says the students need, a student meets the requirements for grad when he or she demonstrates evidence of proficiency in these areas, in addition to personalized learning processes. Okay? So here, and I've got a couple links open, actually, if you go to the sequence one, and if you want us to pull it down just a bit, have the top three boxes showing it. Perfect. So I think I've shared this with you as well last year, but just as a quick reminder, last year we started creating some district policies, district procedures, rather, for having some common practices around proficiency-based learning. And we created this continuum. And the first one was graduation standards, using the graduation standards, the ones on the wall over here that you've all seen within the leaves, and having teachers creating learning targets, we talked about learning targets before, on their own, and then tagging them to these broader graduation standards, and start collecting data in that manner, start informing instruction in that manner. So that's where we were last year. That's what virtually everybody, grades five through 12, was, was working on and operating with it. The next step was, now that you had a year of creating your own learning targets, now let's see if we can find some common ground and agree on some targets specific to your disciplines. So in other words, what, what do all those grad standards or transferable standards look like in each discipline area? Regardless of which school you're in, you have a common set of expectations, even within those broader common expectations. So then we asked folks to get together and create common learning targets. And the disciplines I'm talking about tonight did a wonderful job of this. One of the reasons was we were able to get them together four times during the year last year, on Tuesday afternoons, bringing them together as a district. And then also, the in-service stage we had as a result of these Sundays, we put them all in rooms together, and they hammered these things out, and right now, they are using them for the first time. And right now, they are using them for the first time this trimester. And they also, many of those groups, have moved on to now create the proficiency scales.
Did Jeff do the AR?
Yes, sir. Jumper. Sorry. So the common proficiency scales are the, or, yeah, are the criterion that people are using to judge proficiency, to evaluate proficiency, and also to help move students along the continuum of proficiency. And so we've also got a lot of groups who've created common scales. I'm going to give you, show you an example of one. Yep. So this is music. And music now, K through eight, has common learning targets they're all working on. Those are the shaded areas. And the other boxes are the other areas of the scale. So the far left highlighted in yellow are the graduation or transferable standards that they are tagged to, they are aligned with. So everybody in every discipline are, is tagging and aligning, which uses that language in that view, but also now within disciplines, they have common expectations of the common language as well. Okay? So that's an example. I think there's seven or eight there. So I also wanted to share a little bit of a video that I'm going to show you in a second here, but by Sir Cam Robinson. And I don't know how many of you are familiar with him. He's written several books. One of his more recent ones is Creative Schools, The Grassroots Revolution That's Transforming Education. He is, he has very popular TED Talks. In fact, he had the most popular TED Talk of all time. It's not the one I'm going to show you clip from tonight, but the one I am going to show you is also quite popular. And he has a lot of fascinating ideas and provocative ideas. One of them is that he views education as, the process of education should be like being a gardener. Rather than trying to build or impose a particular characteristic on children, you should be cultivating the earth in a way that makes it possible for the student to be successful. And that's captured in one of his quotes. Nobody else can make anybody else learn anything. You cannot make them any more than if you are a gardener. You can make flowers grow. You don't make flowers grow. You don't sit there and stick the petals on and put the leaves on and paint it. You just don't do that. The flower grows itself. Your job, if you are any good at it, is to provide the optimum conditions for it to do that, to allow it to grow itself. So what I'm going to do here is show just a few clips of his TED Talk that was entitled, I think, Is Education Killing Creative? He has some very strong news on this, and I'm going to share a few we're going with you tonight that hopefully capture the importance of these experiences as we move forward. It's also quite humorous.
Well, these things have in common is that kids will take a chance. If they just know, they'll have a go. Am I right? They're not frightened of being wrong. Now, I don't mean to say that being wrong is the same thing as being creative. What we do know is, if you're not prepared to be wrong, you will never come up with anything original. If you're not prepared to be wrong, and by the time they get to be adults, most kids have lost that capacity. They have become frightened of being wrong. And we run our companies, this, by the way, we stigmatize mistakes. And we're now running national education systems where mistakes are the worst thing you can make. And the result is that we are educating people out of their creative capacities. Picasso once said this, he said that all children are born artists. The problem is to remain an artist as we grow up. I believe this passionately. If we don't grow into creativity, we grow out of it. Or rather, we get educated out of it. So why is this? I lived in Stratford-on-Avon until about five years ago. In fact, we moved from Stratford to Los Angeles. So you can imagine what a seamless transition, you know, this was from LA. Actually, we live in a place called Snitterfield, just outside Stratford, which is where Shakespeare's father was born. Are you struck by a new thought, Angus? You don't think of Shakespeare having a father, do you? Do you? Because you don't think of Shakespeare being a child. Do you think of Shakespeare being seven? I never thought of it. I mean, he was seven at some point, he was in somebody's English class, wasn't he? Do you think so? How annoying would that be? Must try harder. Being sent to bed by a sad, to Shakespeare, "Go to bed now," you know, to William Shakespeare, "and put the pencil down." And stop speaking like that. You know, it's, it's confusing everybody. Anyway, we moved from Stratford to Los Angeles. And I just wanted to say a word about the transition. Actually, my son didn't want to come. I've got two kids, he's 21 now and my daughter's 16. He didn't want to come to Los Angeles. He loved it, but he had a girlfriend in England. This was the love of his life, Sarah. He'd known her from Muff. Imagine they'd had their fourth anniversary. Because it's a long time when you're 16. Anyway, he was red hot, sat on the plane. He said, "I'll never find another girl like Sarah." And we were rather pleased about that, frankly. She was, she was the main reason we were leaving the country. But something strikes you when you move to America and when you travel around the world, every education system on Earth has the same hierarchy of subjects. Everyone, doesn't matter where you go, you'd think it could otherwise, but it isn't. At the top are mathematics and languages. Then the humanities and the bottom are the arts, everywhere on Earth. And in pretty much every system too, there's a hierarchy within the arts. Art and music are normally given a higher status in schools than drama and dance. There isn't an education system on the planet that teaches dance every day to children the way we teach them mathematics. Why? Why not? I think this is rather important. I think maths is very important, but so is dance. Children dance all the time if they're allowed to, we all do. We all have bodies, don't we? Did I miss a meeting? I mean, I think. Truthfully, what happens is, as children grow, we start to educate them progressively from the waist up. And then we focus on their heads and slightly to one side. If you were to visit education as an alien and say, "What's it for, public education?" I think you'd have to conclude, if you look at the output, you know, who really succeeds by this? Who does everything they should? Who gets all the brandy points? You know, who are the winners? I think you'd have to conclude, the whole purpose of public education throughout the world is to produce university professors. Who's path?
I'm going to skip just a little bit into our next one.
Get yourself. If you want real evidence of out-of-body experiences, by the way, get yourself along to a residential conference for senior academics and pop into the discotheque on the final night. And there you will sit, grown men and women writhing uncontrollably off the beat. Waiting till it ends so they can go home and write a paper about it. Our education system is predicated on the idea of academic ability. And there's a reason. The whole system was invented around the world. There were no public systems of education really before the 19th century. They all came into being to meet the needs of industrialism. So the hierarchy is rooted on two ideas. Number one, that the most useful subjects for work are at the top. So you were probably stayed benignly away from things at school when you're a kid, things you liked. On the grounds you would never get a job doing that. Is that right? Don't do music, you're not going to be a musician. Don't do art, you're not going to be an artist. Benign advice, now profoundly mistaken. The whole world is engulfed in revolution. And the second is academic ability, which has really come to dominate our view of intelligence because the universities designed the system in their image. If you think about the whole system of public education around the world, it's a protracted process of university entrance. And the consequence is that many highly talented, brilliant, creative people think they're not, because the thing they were good at at school wasn't valued or was actually stigmatized. And I think we can't afford to go on that way. In the next 30 years, according to UNESCO, more people worldwide will be graduating through education than since the beginning of history. More people. And it's the combination of all the things we've talked about, technology and its transformation effect on work, and demography and the huge explosion in population. Suddenly, degrees aren't worth anything. Isn't that true? When I was a student, if you had a degree, you had a job. If you didn't have a job, it's because you didn't want one. And I didn't want one, frankly, so. But now, kids with degrees are often heading home to carry on playing video games, because you need an MA, where the previous job required a BA, and now you need a PhD for the other. It's a process of academic inflation, and it indicates the whole structure of education is shifting beneath our feet. We need to radically rethink our view of intelligence. We know three things about intelligence. One, it's diverse. We think about the world in all the ways that we experience it. We think visually, we think in sound, we think kinesthetically, we think in abstract terms, we think in movement. Secondly, intelligence is dynamic. If you look at the interactions of a human brain, as we heard yesterday from a number of presentations, intelligence is wonderfully interactive. The brain isn't divided into compartments. In fact, creativity, which I define as the process of having original ideas that have value, more often than not, comes about through the interaction of different disciplinary ways of seeing things. The brain is intelligent. By the way, there's a shaft of nerves that.
So I'm going to grant some just one last.
Because she's, for the third thing about intelligence is, it's distinct. I'm doing a new book, and one called Epiphany, which is based on a series of interviews with people about how they discovered their talent. I'm fascinated about how people got to be there. It's really prompted by a conversation I had with a wonderful woman who most people have never heard of, she's called Gillian Lynn. Have you heard of her? Somehow. She's a choreographer, and everybody knows her work. She did Cats and Phantom the Opera. She's wonderful. I used to be on the board of the Royal Ballet in England, as you can see. And anyway, Gillian and I had lunch on that, I said, "How do you get to be a dancer?" And she said, it was interesting, when she was at the school, she was really hopeless. And the school in the 30s wrote to her parents, said, "We think Gillian has a learning disorder." You couldn't construct, she was fidgeting. I think now, they'd say she had ADHD. Wouldn't you? But this was the 1930s, and ADHD hadn't been invented, you know, at this point, so it wasn't an available condition, you know, people, people, people weren't aware they could have that. Anyway, she went to see this specialist, so this oak panel room, and she was there with her mother, and she was led and sat on this chair at the end, and she sat on her hands for 20 minutes while this man talked to her mother about all the problems Gillian was having in school. And at the end of it, because she was disturbing people, their homework was always late and so on, little kid of eight, in the end, the doctor went and sat next to Gillian, said, "Gillian, I've listened to all these things that your mother's told me, I need to speak to her privately." So she said, "Wait here, we'll be back, we won't be very long," and they went and left her. But as they went out of the room, he turned on the radio that was sitting on his desk. And when they got out of the room, he said to her mother, "Just stand and watch her." And the minute they left the room, she said she was on her feet, moving to the music. And they watched for a few minutes, and he turned to her mother, and he said, "You know, Mrs. Lynn, Gillian isn't sick. She's a dancer. Take her to a dance school." I said, "What happened?" He said, "She did." I can't tell you how wonderful it was. We walked in this room, and it was full of people like me, people who couldn't sit still, people who had to move to think, who had to move to think. They did ballet, they did tap, they did jazz, they did modern, they did contemporary. She was eventually auditioned for the Royal Ballet School. She became a soloist, she had a wonderful career at the Royal Ballet. She eventually graduated from the Royal Ballet School, found her own company, the Gillian Dance Company, met Andrew Lloyd Webber. She's been responsible for some of the successful musical theater productions in history. She's given pleasure to millions, and she's a multimillionaire. Somebody else might have put on medication and told her to calm down. Now, I think. What I think it comes to is this, Alan Gore spoke the other night about ecology and the revolution that was triggered by Rachel Carson. I believe our only hope for the future is to adopt a new conception of human ecology, one in which we start to reconstitute our conception of the richness of human capacity. Our education system has mined our minds in the way that we strip mine the earth for a particular commodity. And for the future, it won't serve us. We have to rethink the fundamental principles on which we're educating our children. There was a wonderful quote by Jonas Salk, who said, "If you were to, if all the insects were to disappear from the earth, within 50 years, all life on Earth would end. If all human beings disappeared from the earth, within 50 years, all forms of life would flourish." And he's right. What TED celebrates is the gift of the human imagination. We have to be careful now that we use this gift wisely and that we avert some of the scenarios that we've talked about. And the only way we'll do it is by seeing our creative capacities for the richness they are and seeing our children for the hope that they are. And our task is to educate their whole being so they can face this future. By the way, we may not see this future, but they will. And our job is to help them make something of it. Thank you very much.
And we do have two students here from CVU who are willing to talk to us. Emma and Will, come on up, and they're just going to share some of their experiences with some of the essential arts.
So can I show you?
Anywhere you'd like to stand. Why, right over here?
Bring a chair over.
Come on over. Yeah, we can bring chairs over. You want to sit?
Or dance.
You want to sit?
Get a chair if you want.
Sure.
And I want to thank both of them for making time in their very busy schedules to come and chat with you. Emma, you want to start?
Yeah, sure. So I have been in French, well, since sixth grade, I guess. And I'm also in art. I started, I mean, I had art classes all through middle school and elementary school, but I did intro to art at CVU and drawing and painting, advanced drawing and painting, and now I'm in EP art. I would say that I definitely don't maybe have as many free blocks as other people, but I, I think that my elective classes are good, a good block that isn't quite like, it's not based on like a test in a month. There's no, there's not a lot of quizzes in my electives. It's, it's a good block to sort of relax in while also doing something. I'm not sitting in free block, almost falling asleep. I, I go, I feel productive, but I'm also having a lot of fun in both, both French and art.
Yeah. Will?
I'm Willem Hillier. I'm a senior here. I do a lot of stuff with engineering and design tech stuff. And then I also do, I'm a musician, so I do stuff with music. Those are my two main interests, which is sort of interesting considering what we're talking about tonight. And I'm also doing the Nexus program this year, which is, I don't know how many people here know about it, but it's a self-learning program where it's project-based learning, where instead of sitting in a class and learning about something specific, you design your own project and learn possibly very disciplinary-specific stuff, but then get credit for that. So you can kind of have the best of both worlds, where you're still getting recognition of the work you've done, but you're also doing your own thing and not a, you can do things that aren't, you know, traditional education classes like math or English or Let's see, last year, I, the whole Nexus thing for me sort of came out, I've always done a lot of independent projects with, I mean, I'm sort of like a maker is the term, I suppose. So I build things, and the Nexus program has allowed me to do those projects more full-time, if you will. Last year, I modified a Power Wheels wheelchair, or a Power Wheels toy car into a wheelchair for a little girl so she could walk.
Have you heard of that guy?
Yeah, I'm that guy.
Yeah, I've read about him.
I've seen his.
Anyway, that's, that was a fun project. I mean, that wouldn't have really been possible without some of the resources CVU has to offer, both in terms of just physical resources, equipment. I mean, I use a $3,500 3D printer, for example. I couldn't have done the project without that. And a fancy laser cutter, and then a whole shop, obviously, right there. And then additionally, I mean, the people we have here are amazing. Jeff Tobrak and Olaf Rudolph for that were a huge help. Yeah.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for you? Yes, go ahead, Eric. The Nexus program, is that specific to sort of engineering-type pursuits, or does that apply to anyone if they were? Anyone. Could be any discipline. Yeah. My son last year was in it and did an internship at a sports radio show at the 101.3. Was on the air, doing promos and doing interviews. So that's an example of a non-engineering experience.
Emma, what sort of media are you working with? Emma, what sort of media are you working with in AP art, for example?
Well, usually we get to pick our medium because, just because it's sort of like the most, it's like the highest art class, and we've learned everything, like how to use watercolor, how to use acrylic. We've basically learned all of that, so we can sort of choose. And I definitely have branched out in AP art because there's just so many materials at our disposal, and that's definitely something I don't have at home. And so I still get like the help I need, the teaching I need, but I'm able to basically have my own, like I can just roam the art room and everything. But done a lot of oil painting lately and watercolor painting.
Yes, Joe.
Did you have to talk to your families and convince them about this? Or how did that come about? I assume your families are involved in the decision-making or following this path.
Well, my family's always been sort of the type of family that doesn't want to, doesn't want like their kids to sort of quit. So I guess they sort of just, like I've always loved art and they sort of just expect me to sign up for art classes and everything. I think they probably think it's sort of weird if I dropped French and art, because they're two things that I'm always coming home and raving about, always, like two like most interesting things at school, I would say. And I guess I just wouldn't have as much interesting things to talk about and be passionate about if I didn't have those. So they definitely encouraged me to go with that.
Last question? Maybe two more, maybe three more.
Emma, why do you...
Sorry.
Why do you like French?
I like French just because it's definitely a challenge. I don't know if it would be like my forte or whatever, but I like it just because I get to learn something that is a totally different culture. It's not, I don't feel like it's like exactly like regular school because you're talking about all these, like we talk a lot about like French culture, more than we talk about like verb conjugations. We, but we're also learning like a really practical skill at the same time. And that's just like, it's just like a little bit more than a normal class. I think it covers a lot more bases. Yeah.
Do you, is a question for either or both of you. Do you feel as, excuse me, you, you know, chosen this path, does the school have for you the resources or support, do you think, to make the transition from CVU into the next step with this chosen path that you're on? Do you feel like whether that's with guidance or your ideas for the future, like how this is going to, and I know that's a broad question.
Yeah, I think that guidance counselors are really good about just helping you get to like the college or any other place you would go after high school that you want to get into, and they help you find places that would have all of your interests and good fits. And they, if you mention a college that they don't know too much about, they totally don't discourage you. They want to get you into the college you want to get into. That's what I've noticed.
But I guess I mean too, in the sense of beside the traditional college, like a gap year programs or arts, arts residencies abroad or different maker things that are happening worldwide, like those kind of bigger events. Do you have resources at your fingertips for those, or is that your self-initiative that you're kind of looking at?
I guess I've never really asked that specifically. I haven't thought too much about what I'm going to do after I graduate, in a happy year or whatever. But I have like a good relationship with my guidance counselor, and if I had a question about that, I'm sure I could ask them.
Great.
I could sort of speak to that, because one of the things with the Nexus Program is it's entirely, I mean, not entirely, but it's almost completely self-directed. So, I mean, everything you're doing is student-initiative-based, and teachers kind of step back, and then you talk to them and ask them, "I, you know, can you bring me to this internship? You know, I need a ride," or, you know, "resources," or, you know, it's kind of just, you get resources as long as you have, obviously, like, you know, I know Jeff Tobrak and he knows me, so he'll let me use the shop. But if I need help, then I can ask him and get those resources myself. So it's kind of an interesting question you ask, because I think, at least in the Nexus Program, it's by definition self, everything you're doing is found out by yourself.
Seems like you guys are very passionate. Excuse me. Seems like you guys are very passionate about the track that you're on and what you're doing. Do you have the opportunity to work with freshmen or younger students to kind of drive that passion into them or show them a different way, the way that you took?
Though I don't really like, I don't really have classes with freshmen, really, which is sort of a bummer, because I don't really see the freshman class too much. I actually am involved in two clubs that sort of could get me on that path. The Link Crew was what ran freshman orientation on the first day of school, and I was a Link leader, which was a lot of fun. And I got to have a group of 10 freshmen, that we did a lot of activities that sort of got us ready for life at CVU. And I think it was, it was good to interact with the freshmen, and I told them all the things that I loved about CVU. We did a tour of the school. I told them where the art classes, art classrooms were, the French classrooms were, and they were like, "Wow, our school doesn't, our old school doesn't have this." So they can see that seniors are passionate about things and that seniors don't quit. Because my partner on that thing, on the Link Crew, is also involved. She, I think she does Spanish, and so she didn't quit her electives either. And I'm also on Academic Leadership Club, where we're going to have to get 20 hours of academic leadership hours. And I was thinking of actually working with Ms. McLean in her sophomore, mostly sophomore, drawing and painting class. And I think it'd probably be good to have a face from AP art in there and show them that it really does pay off to work your way up through the art classes and everything.
Let's make this the last one. Go ahead, Russ.
So with the prescribed curriculum, do you feel you've got enough flexibility or enough time in your schedule to take these things that you want to take? You know, you've got to take, what, four years of English and three years of science or, you know, whatever the curriculum is, that you may or may not be all that interested in and may or may not see as being of as much value to you as if you could take more art classes? You know, for both of you.
Yeah, that's definitely a valid question. I know a lot of people let drop classes because of time, but I would say freshman year is sort of a problem, because I know that I had to choose between, in eighth grade, I had to choose between taking art in ninth grade or continuing band, and I decided to continue with art instead of band. So I haven't played my clarinet for years. But if, I guess if there was like less, less structure in the core, that would definitely keep some people in music and art, because there's not a lot of overlap at all, which I thought, sort of a bummer.
It may seem, when my kids went through CVU and they've been out of here for four or five years now, a lot is crammed into freshman and sophomore year, and then you've got more flexibility to do it in junior and senior year. Could that be somehow sort of rearranged a little bit to, you know, maybe pace that differently through your four years here and allow you more time to do these sorts of things? Or do you see the value to, all right, get it done?
I think that it's a little strict freshman and even in sophomore year, it's a little strict. So I think that would be better to take a few of those required things out of the way, but I don't know what you think.
Yeah, I, this is actually my second year at CVU, because I transferred from a private school and stuff got wonky and credits, believe me. So anyway, I ended up with having some pretty serious credit deficiencies because of that change, because CVU required credits that weren't required by my old school and all this stuff. Anyway, it was complicated, but basically, so I can't, I can't speak to freshman or sophomore years, but what I did do is I took eight classes last year, and basically they were straight up, I got almost two credits of English last year. I got 1.75 credits in English and then in addition to that, you know, math track class and then chem and, you know, all this kind of standard things. And I took eight classes for the whole time last year, including a couple ones I wanted to take. But the result of that is now this year, I'm only taking what I see as two necessary or classes, classes that are required, if you will, which are physics and calc for me. But I also want to take them, so it's fine. So this year, what I've set up myself is that I'm basically taking everything I want to take, which I think is really nice personally. If it was up to me, I think I would prefer to have kind of everything that's required crammed early on, and then that gives you more time later on to do exactly what you want, which is what I've done.
Thank you.
I would say the question about requirements and now in a proficiency-based world, we're asking this question constantly, exploring a lot of different options, doing some really exciting things here, including the Nexus Program, but also the idea of hubs, which we can talk about in another time. But you're asking that very question, Russ. It's put that proper balance between what we want to make sure everybody experiences and what we honor in terms of the creativity and the flexibility and the individuality. So hopefully that's a decent backdrop for the people, the professionals who will be coming and speaking to you the rest of the year on a monthly basis through disciplines. Thank you to my, our students. And good luck to students. We appreciate you coming in tonight.
Yeah, no problem.
Best to you. Thanks.
How do we get academic leadership credits for this?
Yeah, if you want me to sign up on...
She was in my kitchen in Boston when she was this big. Oh, sorry, we'll have no memory lane. So with that, we will move on to discussion matters.
Can I just add something about the essential arts?
Oh, yeah.
So I play a fair amount of music. I play trombone in the school band, jazz band, DYO, and I do a lot of professional and also piano on the side. And I think that we need to change the way arts are viewed so that anyone can be involved, that just because someone's involved in the arts doesn't mean they're going to major in it in college, doesn't mean they're going to have a career in the arts, doesn't even mean, doesn't even mean that they need to be good at the arts. Because involvement in music, for example, can range, or has a wide range. I have a friend who is practicing for his Berklee Live audition today, which is three weeks away. And I have another friend who played trumpet in middle school, euphonium for two years in high school, and now plays trump, tuba. And he told me that he can barely even play a note, but he loves it. He just loves going to band as a class. And one thing, I went to the All Eastern Honors Ensemble, which was 11 states in the Northeast last spring, and the conductor was Dennis Fisher, who's the concert band director at University of North Texas, which has one of the best concert band and marching band programs in the country. And he, at our concert, made a statement to the audience saying that he sees music as the only thing where students can think critically. And he described it as the only time when in one instant, a student can, a student needs physical ability, mental ability, needs to work with others, and can exercise creative ability, all in one instant. So I think if we frame music and the arts in general in that way, that would be beneficial to furthering arts education in the student body.
Yes.
Yeah, if I could just add on to that, because when I first got to CVU as a freshman, I signed up for Beginning Acting because frankly, I didn't want to take a visual art class, because I always thought I was bad at that. And I think of myself as more of a STEM kind of student. I like math and science and stuff like that, so Beginning Acting was kind of way out there for me. But I ended up really liking it, and that led me to take public speaking and advanced acting the next year, which, so it was a really enlightening experience for me. And I've been able to take those skills that I learned in acting and public speaking into my other classes, because of course, we do a lot of public speaking in, say, our humanities classes. But I think that if I hadn't of making that, made that choice to, instead of suffering through a visual art class for me, go the acting route, then I wouldn't have experienced that. And I think that students need to broaden their view of what they can take, that it doesn't just have to be one thing or the other.
That's great.
That is good. I feel like CVU is like the critical size where you can have interests and you can have, you know, strong activities as well, where you can, you can be in sports and music. I started at a high school that had 4,000 kids, and you could only do one of them, because the participation was so high, they couldn't offer it to everybody. So I think it's...
It's great to hear you guys say that, because it definitely sounds like it's making a difference. It's awesome.
Thank you guys for sharing that, and I think it's interesting hearing what you say about what you did as freshmen and sophomores, and the questions as we think about equity too. If students don't have those opportunities as freshmen and sophomores, music, things like that, where students who have the ability to take lessons privately, to continue those things privately and then jump back in in the public sphere in 11th and 12th grade. But if we don't, if those opportunities aren't available in ninth and 10th, you know, is there an equity, a bigger equity question there too, about really who's going to be able to access it in 11th and 12th for some of those programs? Your experiences are helpful to speak to that. Thank you.
Is that a struggle with the Nexus Program as far as like equity and access?
The Nexus Program's pretty new. It's only in its second year. That's about 18 to 22 students, I would say. And it is open to freshmen through seniors, so they do have freshmen in there. But it is a challenge to take all the things that we value in education and figure out a way to do it in a manner that enhances the experience and fire, finds that fire, that passion in students. That's, you know, it's a continual challenge.
They did a whole presentation for the CVU Board last year on the Nexus Program. It was fascinating. And I don't know how long our ETN keeps our board meetings, but it was the presentation at some point last year.
Yeah, that's a good idea. We could link it.
It was, it was really interesting. And they had some of the students who were in the, in the program talk about the projects that they were doing, and we had the same questions about equity, a lot of similar questions.
Good. Okay. Anything else?
Great. Thanks for interrupting me. Appreciate it.
Yeah. That's great.
So we'll move on to discussion matters and 7.1 policy. There were three policies in the packet. Are there any comments on the, do you have any?
So three policies, all either being modified or added by a requirement of grants or law. And I'm happy to talk about it. The wellness policy, basically dealing with nutritional values of foods in school. Capitalization of assets has something to do with only gene understands. Food service operations is really dealing with reimbursable lunches. They'll be on the docket next, next month to adopt.
Is, is the wellness policy, we already have this?
We have a wellness policy. Christine Lloyd Newberry, our...
Director of Integrated Wellness.
Director of Integrated Wellness revised it, so it would now conform with new standards. And it was so different, it didn't even make sense to compare the two completely. But, but this affects how she gets grants, so it had to be written in a certain way.
Well, and I would point out, it's a mandatory policy, and this probably is very much their model policy, right?
It's a model policy.
It's just, it's weird language, like under goals for nutrition, food shall not be used in district schools as a reward or punishment. Like, what does that mean? Like for PBAS, we... Like, for P B A S, we can't have pizza parties anymore, or, I mean?
I think it probably means the opposite. It can't be withheld.
But it says as a reward.
Yeah, 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 well.
Could you train your dog?
Well, I, it just, it seems like a weird.
Because if it's math, right, you give them an.
Megan probably has the answer here while we guess, but.
It just seems like a weird thing to have.
It's a good question, and it's affecting in the develop, in, once we have the policy, it'll be a matter of looking at our practices and examining what that looks like. So I think it is related to the idea of having a pizza party. It doesn't necessarily mean we can't have a pizza party, but we're having a celebration, you know, so it is, it is a required policy. Then that language, that's what's raising the eyebrows of the people on the wellness committee, realizing, wow, this is, we're going to have to take a look at this, and it'll change our.
I mean, I think this is prompted.
I think it's one thing. I'm sorry. You go ahead.
It's one thing to have, you know, pizza for the whole class, as opposed to you get a cookie, you don't.
Yes.
Correct.
Right.
Where you're singling out individuals one way or another.
Or alternatives. For instance, like you can have a pizza party and, I don't know, games, so people can do both, they can do games, they can have pizza. So maybe it's not an either or, but both.
But to be clear, it doesn't preclude. I mean, if there's a celebration, I mean, in our culture, food is a part of celebration for a lot of things, so it would seem odd to exclude it.
Well, so I would take out as a reward, and then just leave it as a punishment. I mean, because.
Well, I think we, I think we need to take the time to interpret it, because it might mean, just like Russ said, you know, you can give, it has to be inclusive to a group. So if I do really well, and Eric doesn't, and I get food and he doesn't, and we're in the same class.
But I mean, outside of like.
I don't know what it means.
But why not, right? If you give a kid a jelly bean, it's like you give him a, I don't know, you give him a sticker, I mean, are we going to?
So you answered the question right, you get a cupcake in that manner, or the whole class did a really great job this week paying attention.
Okay. I think that if you kind of did a little history on this, you would find that this policy probably came about when the new federal nutritional guidelines came out about three years ago, and they were incredibly prescriptive, and everybody in the whole world pushed back. They've, not reduced, but.
Yeah, walked them back a little.
They certainly walked back some of those nutritional guidelines at the federal level. But when you read this policy, if you have that in your head, have that as context, you'll see that there's a lot of that there, and it has a lot to do with trying to fight obesity. And so when you're reading it, it's kind of important to have the context. But I think those are all good, good things to think about, and we certainly never want the situation where we say, you get the pizza, and Elaine, go sit in the corner, right?
But we are thinking that this is going in terms of like that implementation and what that work is going to look like in a place where there's, you know, basically no food outside of the cafeteria in any context in schools. Like, that's where I think if people are concerned, you can't, you can't ever. Right. Well, yeah. And you probably remember conversations about bake sales and what you can sell at a bake sale and what you can't sell at a bake sale, you know, because the bake sale products also needed to comply with, so.
And I will say this, it turns out that right now, our state's guidelines are stricter than the feds. So we're in kind of that place where initially, it was all about like the feds are requiring this, and we were screaming and hollering. And so they relaxed their guidelines, and now we're at a different place where we're having that conversation at the state level. Because nobody disagrees that we want to provide nutritious food, we want to build good habits for eating, but when you get into policing what parents are bringing in for the birthday party, that's when it gets a little bit wiggy. So. Or what you can sell at a bake sale.
So I'll move on to 7.2, which is budget development. Am I going to speak to this stream? Or is Lynn going to do it?
So at the board meeting I wasn't at in May, the board decided, how's that a way to start, to look at doing budgeting differently. And I think Eric was, was a big driver of that as, as heading the finance committee, looking at a different way to do budgeting as more than just a year-by-year process, actually getting a multi-year budget out, and being able to plan and have the administration plan for what we're looking at in terms of numbers. So the finance committee has spent a lot of time this fall looking at how would we do that? Well, Jean spent a really long time this fall figuring out how to do that, what we were coming up with, what indices were we going to use to kind of track the next five years? What were we going to base budget increases on? Were we just going to keep picking numbers out of the blue, or were we going to use some actual data? So we came up with a couple of indices, and then combined a couple of indices to come up with the different cases that you see back here that Jean can go through the details on. And we kind of outlined what those were on that sheet of paper that we, that, that you have, the NEP, the C P I, and then our combination ones. The C P I is the one that actually the Vermont School Board Association, I don't know if you all looked at, the packet that came out from the meeting, that they had the chart of school budgets versus the C P I. And on average, school budgets have increased over the past 10 years 2.2 percent. C P I has only increased 1.7 percent. So what you will see is our first stab at kind of some different measures that we could use to give, to provide to the administration to use in their budget development. And what the finance committee, our recommendation is, is that tonight, we pick one of those to give to the administration. We're not going to recommend one, and you'll see, there's lots of detail on the back, so I'll let Jean do the detail. I really want the detail. I have several topics of detail. I, I will preface this by saying, in a way, this is, it was made a little bit easier. Our, our student population and the equalized pupils really isn't going to change, we think, over the next five or six years. That makes it a lot easier to try and look at where the budgets are going to go, not having to take that whole fluctuation. The idea that tax rate is basically set based on your cost per pupil, so if you had a rapidly changing student population, then the same level of spending would give you rapidly change, different tax rates. But we did, we did run it through, a couple of our scenarios through with the real numbers, and they basically didn't change at all. So just for simplicity, we just took that off the table, and that's why what you've got here is increase in net ed spending. So it's what you, so it's all of your spending, subtract the revenue, and there's two really key pieces of the revenue that we subtracted. The, the one piece is what you call local revenue, like special ed or tuition, those kind of things. The other big piece of the revenue that we subtract is fund balance application. So what the committee wanted to do was not assume, well, we applied 1.1 million dollars of our fund balance application to revenue in the year we're in. The committee did not want to assume that we were always going to have that, because we need to, we have about 2 million left, we need to keep about a million in the bank, is what our auditors are telling us. So if we assumed another million, we'd be, could be, have nothing left for the next year, and that leaves us a big hole. So, so there was a ramp, a proposed like ramp of down, so instead of applying 1.1, it was a downward ramp of that to getting to, getting to the, only having the million left at the end of the five years. So those are really the two big levers. One was how much you allowed growth on the actual spending. As Lynn said, the two numbers were NEP, which is an education-related index. As you read over this, though, you'll see that that includes, a big piece of that is the compensation for teachers, because that's a big part of education spending. So you really picked that, it's a little bit circular, you could argue, but that is one, and it's probably a realistic one for the near term. And then there's the C P I, which is a consumer goods, so it's not as tied to what actually schools spend, but it's probably related to more of an inflation kind of thing. So those were the two indices the committee wanted to use. And if you look at the cases up in the little, the bold explanation, you can see that we sort of slid it from the high to the low in the, in the first case, starting at NEP and going down to C P I. That was, that's what we called the baseline. The case one, we just used C P I. In all, the case two, we didn't increase it at all, so we just left the spending flat. And that's sort of what the governor's proposing, so that would be what was called case two here. Case three is sort of a hybrid. And the two point, the 2.3 percent came from the average of the 2.9 percent and the 1.7 percent. That's how, that was the Lynn Jean index that we came up with.
So I have a question about, so a basic assumption built into a lot of budgeting is you're expected to population and growth of students in some ways? Because if you expect a huge influx of kids, then you would accommodate that by planning for more spending in your budget. And I'm, I'm curious, particularly with a lot of development in Williston that's going on, like, I know last year, we had kindergarten classes that were unusually high, and we rectified it this year. How are we addressing that now that we're consolidated, especially if like there's a shift between the schools? Have we come up with a plan as to how that'll look, particularly from a budgeting perspective? Is it more expensive to have one person share between two schools, or that sort of thing? So how are we incorporating the growth of students?
So the beauty, I think the beauty, I don't know the exact answer to that question, because I think the beauty of what the board decided in May was, that's for the administration to figure out. We kind of give the, we figure out the, what benefit for whom and how much, and then they figure out how they're going to do all of that. So, so in, we're giving them the target with which they have to work under. And I'm assuming, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, that these numbers that we have of equalized pupils and students is based on our enrollment data that's projected.
Yes. I guess my point was is that the state was significantly off in their projections in some places, so I'm wondering, do we have alternative cases if, for instance, they're off again? Like, we have these different cases based on the C P I, but do we also need to have cases based on the projected enrollment being significantly different?
Well, the, the tricky thing, well, let's just say, let me just say that Williston was off, CVU was off, we had other schools that were off in the other direction, and it ain't no difference.
Okay.
And this tax rate is going to be on the overall.
Okay.
So, yes, if you, it's easy enough, it's easy enough to add students, you know, because we don't generally add as much spending when you add a couple of students, you know, until you end up have to start building, a new building or adding, you know, multiple classrooms. But losing students is a bigger issue. And I think right now, our district seems to be in a pretty good space between the building in Williston and some building in Heinsburg, and, you know, it seems to be in a decent shape for the students.
Okay, so we're large enough now that we can kind of absorb those fluctuations?
It absorbs it, it really kind of, that's one of the beauties of consolidation.
I was going to say, I think, you know, one of the real benefits is, and we saw some of this last year, and I expect that we'll continue to see it, is if Williston is in fact growing, and you needed to add another kindergarten teacher, and another one of the school districts isn't growing, and, you know, basically has excess, that district isn't going to on its own, oh, goody, I can shift that money somewhere else and spend it on something else. The central office is going to look at it and say, well, no, you know, we've got these metrics that we're measuring on, and we've got to shift those dollars from, you know, I'll say Shelburne to Williston, because you've got increasing headcount and we don't, if that were, you know, if that was the case.
What about, what about, I mean, it's, it's easy to transfer human capital between buildings, but are other buildings in the district able to support an increase in enrollment? You know, we had a peak in 1998, it's come down. And I'm just saying, in the example of Shelburne, we thought our building was full until we shut down 12,000 square feet of it, and were able to do quite well, because we made everyone account for all of the space, and then we've opened this back up, and, you know, it's significantly less crowded. Is that the case in Williston? Is that the case in Heinsburg and other places?
Every school has historically had quite a few more students than they do today. Every school.
Okay.
Like, the Williston construction is okay, we have this swing space, and so they've kind of squished people in a little.
Yeah.
You're under 11.
And there's only one, there's only one container that has doors on the outside of it that's being used for storage.
No, but as an example, you have 1,100 students in Williston. At its peak, there were 1350. So obviously, there was room.
Same square footage.
In the same square footage. And that is, you know, a similar story in every school.
Cool. That's good.
Well, and, and we had a similar, you know, when you talk about drawing down fund balance, and I know we have this discussion every year, how much should we take? The reality is, if there is some dire need, and all of a sudden, we need more, you go to the community, and you say, okay, we need, you know, so a building burns down, or something. You go back to the community, and you, and you can ask them for those things. But I would think, Charlotte had 530 kids, we now have 330 kids? We could open, we could take a few towns in, in our schools.
Been in Ex-Ferisburg.
We looked at that. So as Lynn started saying, so, so there's, there's really two purposes of the model, and, and I don't want to lose sight in the heat of budget moment, to lose sight of the value of it, looking at it strategically, to, because it gives, it gives the administrative team an ability to say, the board's not asking you to take out 15 people this year, but they are expecting that in three years, you've moved the number down to X, or whatever the, you know, the direction is, and that, it, it helps have some difficult conversations, right? Or, or not, that the numbers, you know, we want a moderate, or moderate, a moderating effect on inflation, but we're not going to ask you to be cutting programs. You know, whatever the strategic goal is, at least it gives me, that I can help Elaine to, to make some decisions and get pointed in the right direction. So that's why I don't want to lose, lose sight of, of the value of a strategic look.
Just, you know, and the conversation in the state is inevitably going to turn to staffing ratios, because we're so far off, you know, any other sort of comparable state. Do we have a sense, and obviously you can't do it to a real last sort of decimal place, but just in a broad sort of order magnitude, if we get, went from seven to seven and a half, or to eight, what that looks like as a, as a, how does that correlate to some of these budget numbers, right? So if you said, oh, we're going to 1.7 percent, is that going from 7.2 to 7.3, or is that going from 7.2 to 8.2?
It's complicated, because it depends what those, what position those people are in.
Right.
You know, so one of the things that I came to pretty early when I was looking at those staffing ratios when they came out two weeks ago was, okay, if it's all about staffing ratios, we get more bang for the buck by eliminating all of our pairs, right? Because we can eliminate three pairs for every teacher. So obviously, then it causes you to go, well, that's not the answer. You can't just look at staffing ratios. You have to look at staffing ratios and our per pupil costs, and see where that intersection is. And it turns out, lucky for us, we're kind of at the same place in both of them, right? We're in a good place in our per pupil cost in terms of our own state. We're right at the average for our own state, and in Chittenden County, where salaries are higher, that's not, and, you know, that's a good thing. That's a really good thing. So how, how quickly we would get to, or how much money you would save from going from 7.2, a 7.2 to one ratio to a 7.5, depends on, you know?
Yeah, I know it's a hard calculation in its early days, but I guess, I feel like the.
The state is trying to go from 4.25 to 5. That's what their goal is.
Right. And so, you know, those are just numbers, and like you said, it depends a lot on the composition of that.
Right.
But the average is going to move up one way or the other. I mean, I think that, the, the energy is around, you know, the state has demonstrated a couple times in the last few years that they want to exercise some control. They tried the A G P, they didn't quite do it right, so they had to backtrack off that a little bit. They've made a statement and, and, you know, followed through on healthcare costs. All indications would be that they're going to find a way to impose discipline on schools' spending. They're going to look at staffing as a, you know, the largest lever, there, because we know that that's our biggest expense. So I think part of this discussion for us, if we're talking about what's appropriate, is, is knowing that something, whether we do something or not, something will be done by the legislature, I presume, you know what I mean? And so I think we want to be ahead of that, not surprised by that, and sort of undershoot in our goals, and then find out they've imposed something more strenuous in terms in our goals, and then find out if they've imposed something more strenuous in terms of their constraints on us, and then we're kind of fighting from a bad hand.
And I could be totally wrong about this, but in every, every new thought they've had about rolling out, like, cost, spending constraints, there's always a variable impact depending on where you are vis a vis what they've decided is going to be the metric. So last year, the BEC proposal was all about, like, per pupil spending. And if you were at the average, which we were, then there wasn't an impact on us. We were held harmless, because that's what they're looking for. They want people to be at the average or lower. So in the BEC proposal, if you spent more money than the average, you were going to pay a lot more for that dollar. And if you spent less than the average, you were going to get the money at a deal. So the, right? So it's going to be the same thing with ratios. And because if you've looked at that staffing ratio, we're not in a bad place. So I'm not, I'm not saying I think that money's going to be free flowing. I think there is not going to be any money this year. We've certainly been giving, been given the soundbites around that a lot. But I think that there will be a differential impact depending on where you are on that state average. Right? So I think that that's part of what everybody has to...
The more ahead of the game you are, the better you are when that new control is rolled out.
If we were talking to the Serk, and I think, and that's actually why we did the flat budget and this other budget that takes a million dollars out of our programs, and I guess, I guess my, my strategy around this is that this board ought to decide what it wants to do, independent of the state, and then task administration to be in a better position if we get a surprise that we have to act quickly. And we have had discussions with all of the principals and the administration, all the buildings, and that's the message we've told them, is tell us what, look at equity matrix, which we'll be sharing with all of you at the December meeting, what you, what's best for your kids and your school. We talked about equity across what innovation you need to, you'd like to bring in to, you know, further and improve the education of your kids. Let's have that discussion. And oh, by the way, there could be some really ugly stuff coming. Let's talk about where you might have, where you might have to take some actions that you don't want to take, and we don't want to take, and the board may not want to take, but the state may force us into taking. So we have had those discussions, and we didn't, you know, we haven't gone beyond that discussion. We had our last one today. So that's, that's the position we're in. But I, I think you, the board could task us to, you know, we would like you to put a plan together that, a budget that hits, that achieves all our educational goals and hits this number. That's what you would, you know, challenge Elaine and I to put together. And yet, if we get a surprise in the next two months, or not so much a surprise, that tells us something differently, we should be prepared to react quickly. Rather than trying to guess what the state's going to tell us to do. With that, I gave the long explanation why I think the strategic is very important, but what's very important to me right now, since I have to put the budget together in a couple of weeks, is with which case, and focused on 2018, 19, frankly, I'm going to, I'm going to tell you, but the committee was, was very firm that they want us to be a board discussion, a decision, and not a committee decision, which is why the committee is not giving you a recommendation. I'm going to tell you, my thinking on this is, if you're just looking at the 2018, 19 column there, the first case, I'm very surprised if the board would be comfortable with a 5% increase. So that made me uncomfortable. The second and the third case, those are very, very tough reductions to take for the system. Because if you, if you looked at it, we haven't rolled things in, we're looking at a 10% increase on healthcare, that's not rolled into this 2.9 or the 1.7 CPI. That means I have to solve it and still get to that number. There's some other upward pressure that we have to fix. So case one and case two, if you do, if that's what the board wants, that's what we'll go solve, but that will, those will involve reductions to program. The reason that Lynn and I noodled on the case three is it's a, it's sort of a hybrid. And I think it's still, it's still 4%, which isn't going to be pretty, but it's, you know, about a half a million dollars out of our current programming, which is, which is something that, you know, we're aiming for already. We have a few things, we've got a little insurance, we've got a little this, you know, we'll try to find it. We have a couple of staffing decisions to make, but that's an achievable number, I think. So that would be a reasonable goal to set. We may come back and say we can't do it without taking cuts you don't want me to take, which, which case the board can have that discussion. But that, I think that last case is a reasonable hybrid to take a run at. And just, just one little reminder, because I should have started with this, you can't, this is not a, this is the increase in net ed spending. The other reason we couldn't really take it down to tax rates is that there's way too many things that affect the tax rate that are outside of our control. So we're, remember, we still get the eight cents off for our consolidation incentive, and yet, the state's talking about at least an eight cent increase, so that was way too magic ball for us. But, but that's the reason I'm not talking, but it's a decent proxy, but a decent proxy for the tax rate increase that the board would be responsible for.
Yeah, Colleen's still there. Is there any other comments on the table in front of us?
The only thing I'd say, just for the record, is I think this discussion would have been more useful before negotiations. And looking at the next two years, you know, the outcome of the negotiations and the amount of money we left on the table there is irreversible. So, you know, we're making a decision, you know, based on something that happened that we might have approached differently if we'd already had a discussion objectively around outcomes that we wanted.
On the other hand, we know what we have to spend. We know what the contract is going to cost us.
Right, we still would have known how much the contract was going to cost us if we'd had this discussion before the...
I think Eric's point is, if we had said we want X percent for our budget increase, we would have said, okay, well, that translates to something as a settlement. And the question is, is did we overshoot that by what we agreed to?
I agree, and unfortunately, we can't go backwards and undo history, but the other, another big benefit of doing this is, it finally puts negotiations into context. We're not, no longer negotiating two- and three-year contracts when we're just dealing on one-year budgets, right? We have a sense of where, where we're going, and it helps to put it all back into context, I think.
Yes, I mean, now you put the cart before the horse, and so the next round, there'll be a framework for the negotiating committee to understand where the board expects it to come out.
So how do we want to come up with a direction?
In case three, where is this $450,000, $1,000 coming from?
That's their job. Our job is to tell them, this is what our goals are. And, and it's, and as we go through, I could be really wrong, but as we go through budget season, what we're going to hear from the administration, I think, is, here are all the pieces to it. This is where, this is where this money's going to come from.
But Jean came up with this number. Presumably, she just didn't roll the dice.
Well, no, we based it kind of on indices, the 2.3% or the 450,000.
Well, any of them. Any of them. The four, either way, the 450, 1,000 or any of these numbers, how did they, where did they come from?
So the first column is our current year budget.
Right, right.
And I increased it for, based on these indices, which we can document. And then we, then we changed the revenue by the assumptions on the fund balance.
Oh, okay, so you just picked 4% as a nice number?
Well, I picked an increase and a, well, that's true, I guess you could say that.
Okay.
Because I did, in this case, because I did adjust the fund balance application.
Is there any strong arguments by anyone for one, two, or three? I mean, what I, what I heard is, there's negatives to one and two, and a possible middle, middle path would be case three. I know the, the shortfalls in case three look to be more palatable than the ones in case one and two, where you're not cutting programs to seven digits. I guess what you're saying, increase in net ed spending, we'd potentially be going in front of the public and saying, your budget's going up by 4%. Is that what I'm seeing?
Depends on the number you pick.
Yeah.
The general, the overall spending is going up 2.3%. Net ed spending would be going up 4%. And that's what your taxes are based on.
Okay.
Because of the reduction in the application of fund balance. That's the difference between the 2.3 going up and the 4 that you're seeing. You could, you could go ahead and apply all the fund balance, but it just keeps dropping down the road.
And you're saying that over five years, you would take the current fund balance of 2.2 million, and you would draw that down to zero?
1.1.
1.1.
To 1.1, okay. Assuming you run totally even budgets over the next five years. Okay.
No surprises.
Exactly.
That'll ever happen.
Yep.
I know this is, this is a new process for the board. It's, I think the thing most, you just need to, for those of you feeling uncomfortable, this is not a, it's a discussion, right? It's a direction. We're going to take the first pass at hitting these numbers to the finance committee the first week in November, and you guys will see them the next week. That's, you know, we still have two months to talk and adjust and, and explain and make changes. So you shouldn't feel like this is some kind of a, you know, hard pass number. It's what you want to see in the budget for our first pass.
I think when we see what each one has as consequences, it'll be a more clear picture to make a decision. I mean, 4% sounds outrageous, but if, if it, going less would make huge cuts in program, we have to have that, that discussion and decision-making.
I'm kind of going to echo Joan on that. Until we know the, like, this is kind of a little abstract, might not quite be the right word, but it's a little too removed, like, I'd kind of like to know more of the programming impact in particular.
Well, and so that's what, what I meant by, like, the first, so we're going to take a run at, when you see it November 14th, it'll say, this is, so we have the educational outcomes that the board wants, and you're asking Elaine to try to put a program together to meet those educational outcomes at this number of spending. And we'll bring that in, and if it can't be done, because we have too much upward pressure on other things, it's a problem, then we'll say, well, if you really want this, this is the implications, and we recommend you put it back, and we can have that discussion. So it's not a, it's not a final thing, but it's, it's a number. Otherwise, you're just saying, we want educational outcomes, and not giving us any guidance until December, when you say, well, that number's too high.
And then what is the right number, right?
Right, right.
I also think we need to be, excuse me, we need to be careful with what we do, because we need to make sure that we're staying in line with what we promised the community through the consolidation, which is kind of a double edged sword, right? It's to save money, but, you know, we're not cutting programs either, like, how do we, I think it's going to be a very interesting budget year to make all of this work for us.
So it's going to be, obviously with an eight cent statewide increase in our eight cent bonus, these are kind of the net numbers in a way, right? I mean, if the state's guidance is accurate. And so an up three and a half, up four, up five, none of those are particularly appealing in terms of staying in front of the community. You just went through an exercise telling them how much money we're going to save. So I, you know, to that point.
I think as a, as a community member, I think for me, it would be harder to have somebody come to me and say, you know what, this is what it is, so we're going to save money, but we're going to cut these programs. I guess, like, where, where does the balance lie? That's what I'm struggling with.
And we said we would save money over about five years, so we don't have to, like, save all the money the first year and really gouge things out. I mean, we can pace ourselves a little.
Yeah, it was 1.5 million over five years, so.
Yeah. I mean, if you, no, case two, that would be the whole.
There's, there's, there's that, which was just sort of compared to what you would have otherwise spent. So saving a million and a half, you could be spending $20 million more instead of $21 and a half million more. I mean, I think, as a community member, they're kind of thinking more in absolute terms than relative terms, but, you know, and you guys did a great job coming up with different scenarios. I guess, just in principle, I would, it's really the trajectory of the forward years that we can sort of be serious about and be able to impact as we go forward in negotiations. I mean, because we've been put, you know, sort of a gun to our head, because we did what we did in negotiations, and now there's only so much we can cut realistically, or not cut, but there's only so low we can raise. You know what I mean? You know, we're looking at this, and you're saying that 4% is a tough number to get to. So that's, it's kind of, ship's already sailed on that one, right? I mean, there's only so much we can do, but I think to, to balance that with some serious discussion about what the years two, three, and four look like. So, you know, I guess my way of saying, just even if it's not exactly one of these scenarios, I'd be in favor for something that puts us on a path to meaningful spending control, knowing that we've locked ourselves in this year, maybe in a place we wish we hadn't, but there we are.
Well, and it's also, it's spending control on the one, one side, and I'm just, I'm going to keep coming back to this, because we say we're a policy board. It's also what we as a board need to change about how we've been doing budgeting. We, you know, at what cost? How much do we want to spend? And then it's their job, and I don't mean to, it's the administration's job to come back and say, okay, this is what, this is what we have. Is this, is this what you're thinking? It doesn't mean that we can't then say, no. But I think we need to change the way that we're thinking about how we do budgets. You know, instead of just saying, oh, you know, because my husband doesn't say, well, spend all you want, and then I'll tell you if you have enough money. You know, he kind of says that, well, he doesn't tell me, but anyway. But still, I mean, it's how you budget, right? You have a set amount of money, what do we get for that money? It is either good or it's not good. And, and having a multi-year plan allows the administration to think ahead and plan better for, for our needs.
And I don't think it would require a dramatic change in what we do or how we do it to put ourselves on a path towards, you know, meaningfully different spending, increased numbers in years three and four. It's just, like you said, it's a different mindset, and it's a, it's a different process, but it puts people on a deliberate path to achieving those goals and not having it become a surprise in a year. And it's really not just doing it for the sake of doing it, but I think doing it, knowing that 3%, 3.5% per annum every year is just not sustainable. So somebody's going to stop us before we stop ourselves if we keep on that path. And it's, you know, so I wouldn't advocate lower spending just for the sake of being stingy, but for the sake of being sustainable and not having someone come to us and staff us out at some point, so you can't, you can't do it anymore.
So you're kind of looking to us to pick a case to get, like, a first stab at these? Okay. So then I have some questions, kind of to guide us in that direction, hopefully. So you've said that our, we're kind of at a plateau in terms of enrollment. It might fluctuate between schools, but it's not expected to go up or down significantly.
Correct.
Okay, so with that in mind, I'm going to make, I was going to say, I was going to make a case for case three. I would propose that we consider case three, since, I don't, this is an assumption perhaps on my part, but if we are plateauing in terms of students, I wouldn't want us to, it seems like that's, like, that's kind of a year-to-year savings, that you're doing this kind of steady. You're having to cut about 450,000-ish, 475,000-ish dollars a year, versus the other years seem to fluctuate quite a bit from year to year. So I, assumption on my part, case three, it seems like it would affect programming perhaps the least, because if you have a plateau in student population, and then you're expecting significant budget cuts, I just don't see how that wouldn't affect programming. Don't know. But so I'm going to make, I'm going to advocate for case three. I'll stick my head out there first, I don't mind.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree as well, and especially when you look at the magnitude of the numbers as far as controlling costs from year to year, a half a million seems like a decent place to start. Two, 2.1 million to 3 million to 5 million, that's, that's like cutting the entire budget of Charlotte a couple of years ago. a couple of years ago out of the entire budget, so.
Hey, we made it to 7 million, didn't we, at some point?
You did, okay. But I, I just think from a, from how much you can change the dial with programming and maybe we can manage this with staff and ratios over the long term and come out ahead, but I.
And to Eric's point, if in years three and four, cause I mean, I think 2018, 2019, and 2019 and 2020 are kinda locked in. But I mean, if we do, if we're able to negotiate a contract that would make, I don't, I don't know how to say this, but that would, that would, that would allow us to have savings, we could realize those in years three and four without having to gouge our programs the first two years. So that's kind of something that.
Contracts through 19, right? So we would have, we would have a new contract for 19, 20.
Oh yeah, sorry, cause we're in a year currently, got it, yeah. But all the more reason, like plan for gradual savings as opposed to like, you know, when you're like cinching your belt, you don't like squeeze it in like four rungs and then just like hold it in, fuck around, can't breathe. You just kinda like one little notch at a time. If you can get that, maybe make your own little notches, but.
A month from now, how many notches it is, okay.
Okay.
Case three.
So any strong dissension to pursuing case three?
I guess I just wanna say for the record, I struggle a little bit with the just completely accepted notion that we have to be on a, of course, we have to be fiscally responsible, but that we're just have to be on a path to cutting. I don't feel like there's a huge public outcry in this, you know, district. I, I think there's a lot of support for the quality of the programming and that's directly tied to staffing and to spending, so.
I don't see us as going down the road of cuts or anything right now. This is just a, a point that we're using to start a informed budgeting conversation. We need, we need something, we need numbers. We need to see what it's gonna look like.
And if case three isn't helpful, well, say, nah, that doesn't work, take us back elsewhere. But I think maybe perhaps starting with a, let's see what happens if we try and.
Cause if we, if we go best case scenario, of course, it just stays the same. So we are, we're all gonna like that, that's the easy decision. But having the information to say, you know, we gotta make some cuts, maybe we end up halfway between our baseline and case three. Maybe we end up at baseline, maybe we end up at case three. But at least it's a conversation starter.
One thing I'd say is, these are all increases. And, you know, we're talking about flat to marginally declining student populations, right? I mean, you're looking at these numbers, they go slightly down over time. We've experienced declining student populations over the years. So, you know, anytime you're up even 2% with fewer kids, you're losing productivity year after year, right? And I think historically, we've been probably closer to three than two. But, you know, if you take a kid who's a senior now, you know, he's in a system, if they were at 3% a year budget increases, he's in a system that's spending about almost 50% more than they were when he was a kindergartner and nothing's changed, right? You know what I mean? You're not building new schools, you're not educating more kids, you're not educating kids necessarily that much differently. It's just a 50% productivity loss over, over time.
I'm gonna maybe step in and play devil's advocate then. If we compensate our teachers, cause that's where most of our money goes towards, we have, I would say, a great staffed team that have been compensated well over the years. And that's something that's intangible, that you can't necessarily measure. But like that increased resource, I think, would be something that would impact the student. So it's not something that you can clearly say that, yes, this amount of money has led to a better staff population. But I would say that it's, it's not necessarily that cut and dry.
No, and I wouldn't say that teachers shouldn't have raises or that we shouldn't value our, our teachers and pay for quality. I'm just saying like, wouldn't it be nice to have that as a goal? How can we get the most productivity out of the best teachers and, you know, find a way to, you know, we, we are so used to having so many constraints on how we interact with our teachers. And wouldn't it be nice to have a chance to compensate them well for what they do without necessarily constraining productivity that, the way that we have done?
Dave, I have a much easier, less philosophical question if the board is done with the bigger questions.
Okay.
Well, it's true, so, I mean, in the bigger, like to bring it all to like a, like, I think a summary. To your point, Eric, and to the point of having this three-year budget process now as opposed to one year at a time, one year at a time. Because with all due respect, when we entered into those negotiations last year, it was with the one-year budget in mind in those numbers. And what we had budgeted for those negotiations was met. Now granted, there were outliers and there's a bigger reason why. I think that it was settled at that time back in May versus kicking the ball down the road. And frankly, I still maintain that, yes, we have a budget shortfall, but we have an intact contact and we have a good spirit of cooperation and we have a lot of respect with our teachers and our community. And I do think that this process, I'm, I think case three, take that number if you're comfortable with it. That's where I would go also. And work towards that three-year program that you're talking about. Now we have different numbers, we have different programming, we know what to pass to the administration. You could come to us and say, this could happen or this could happen. We can make decisions not in a vacuum because the community will or will not complain to us if they don't want that. And then we can react accordingly. I think that's where we're at.
Change takes time, so I think we're heading in the right direction though.
Jean, you had, what were you gonna say?
Cause I just found it a little sticky because Sandy needs to know something. Does the, is budget related? Does, does the board want to mail school reports again this year?
No, we voted on that, we already voted on that, no.
We're not.
We did?
Yeah, we voted last spring.
It was at the, and we talked about it.
Yeah, we definitely voted on that, no.
Sorry, I wasn't there, Sandy and Cheryl and I didn't know the answer to the question.
The answers, no.
Not mailing them.
Nope.
Thank you.
Well, there, there's a much easier question.
There's $10,000, we just.
That was part of the conversation.
We're sending post, we're sending.
Don't you remember the people who were here saying, I, I have them on my list, I'm mailing them one? The people who were here said, we love having this.
But we're sending everyone a postcard.
Everyone gets a postcard, but the people who were here who asked for, without asking for a mailed one are gonna get it.
All right, so we're, we're sending Jean with the message of case three.
Yep.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. All right. We move on to 7.3, the Long Meadow property agreement for Shelburne. I've been involved in this for many years and it's, it's not super complicated, but it's basically a vacant lot in Shelburne that we have access to. We were going to build a school there, we decided not to. And there's a business next door that wants to move our right of way so that they can expand their business. And it's just self-storage. We asked them to, you know, our goal here was to make sure that they weren't asking for a right of way so they could run a gas pipeline or put a salt storage facility there. You know, along those luck sort of lines, those types of things. And so we wanted to make sure that what the development was for was simply to help their business and then just move a sort of useless piece of right of way to another piece of property so that we could still have it if we ever wanted to use it. And it took, as Bob said, it took a long time because there were different legal documents between the two, two places. But it looks like it's all solved. Expenses were all put towards the other property. That was one of the things, if you guys wanna do this, you have to pay for it, so.
Have to, have to pay the expenses, but there, there's no consideration for the district in, in granting this. They're not paying us to move that. They're, they're getting an economic benefit by being able to build more storage. We're moving it for, out of the kindness of our hearts.
Right, cause we're not using the facility anyway. And if we, yeah, we wouldn't be able to use it, we have no plans of, anybody wanna build a new school in Shelburne?
Well, that is the bigger conversation, right? Why are we holding on to, I mean, what is, what are the carrying costs to the district annually for that piece of property?
There's almost none.
Yeah.
So why are we, why do we even still have it?
Cause we haven't found a way to make money on getting rid of it. It doesn't cost us anything, but I suggested building a mobile home park there or an RV park there once upon a time and that didn't go over so well. But it, it, a lot of it's wetland or kind of unbuildable. I'm not sure how it came to be, you know, the Shelburne School District's way back when. But there, there just hasn't been a good use found for it. I don't know why we couldn't put, you know, a bunch of solar panels there or something. But, you know, I know Bob has looked at various things over the years. We tried to get the town to take it off our hands, they didn't want it.
We have had the conversations from the Shelburne School Board about what to do with it. I mean, years ago, we had that conversation before the village school was closed. But, but I, I don't know of any, not having been on the Shelburne Board since way back then, about what, what to do with it.
So it's written in that it has to be used for educational purposes. And in order to change that would require a significant amount of legal expense, which, you know, the last time we visited that, we'd, we'd much rather have a spelling bee than spend that money. So that's.
So it has been discussed. The solar farm that went to offset educational expenses, wouldn't that be educationally related?
Yeah. And then we could add a third solar provider to the Shelburne Community School and that would, that would be good. Anyway, we did kinda look into that, but it's, like, that's tricky because you can't explicitly say that's educational use, so.
We ran into that with the village school becoming a town center. It's the Harrington, the underlying property has specified that it's educational.
So this will come up as an action item at our next meeting?
So it's just, it's missing section six, there is no section six in there. It's, it's a modification of access easement is still missing. And I think the attorney is, I'm assuming, gonna get it at some point.
Okay.
And the other two properties don't have mortgages. They're clear, we're not assuming any partial mortgage or anything like that, okay.
All right. All right, we'll move on to 7.4, VSBA resolutions. So we have the five or six resolutions in front of us. Russ and Joan are going, is that true? Okay.
We're, we're both going and one of us will have to.
Raise your hand.
We get one vote for the district, so one of us, we can draw straws or flip a coin or something for.
Yeah, it'll be fun, Russ.
For, for us to do that. But I, I had said I would kinda go, go through them. I'll, I'll give you my point of view on them and certainly, you know. This is on here as, as a discussion item, but what we want basically is a consensus of the, of the board, if, if one exists, so that Joan or I knows, you know, to raise our hand, yea or nay. So, you know, the first one is this authorization, authorize the creation of school district innovation zones. To be honest, I'm not sure exactly what it means, but it certainly seems innocuous enough that I don't see anything in here that we would object to. So if the VSBA wants to do this to give school districts the freedom to create innovation zones, why not? I don't know if anybody else has anything, Elaine, that, you know, you wanna share on it, but.
No, I think it is just to authorize it so that, you know, if people have great ideas about things that they might do that might require a little bit of flexibility or some support, that there's a mechanism for doing that.
Is it going, is it the first step to magnet schools?
No.
Or, okay.
There's no support for that.
Okay, thank you.
None, none, none.
Well, I just don't understand, like what would be some of the regulations that would inhibit someone from doing something? I mean, it.
Well, title.
This seems kinda superfluous to me, like, oh.
Title 16, 165 kind of outlines all of the things that you need to do in a school and all the way you need to assess students and need to report to the public. And maybe you wanna have on your, in your programming, something that doesn't involve that. That doesn't, you know, I don't know.
I read it more like you maybe could get a little bit of leeway around whatever new state mandates get imposed on you, right? So.
Well, in, in the area of innovation though, you'd have to have an innovative idea and then you'd say, so this particular innovative idea doesn't allow us to or wouldn't work well with this requirement. And in that way, yeah, that's.
But I mean, you could call it an innovation, but, you know, you could, I mean, I just wondered if for a district as big as ours, if we found a way to solve a problem that.
Right, the Nexus Program?
Fit right within there.
People have heard, that's an innovation, that's a total innovation. And it could be somebody who was developing a program like that would say, oh, I wonder if we need to get some release from, right? Whereas other people would say, no, no, I mean, we're, this is within our program and we're doing this and we're making sure and we're making it work.
You know, with, with all of these resolutions, the devil is ultimately is in the details. And, and, you know, we don't have any details. And, and so until, you know, these things are actually slugged out in Montpelier, you know, I, I think we're only sort of making a, a judgment at a very high level. As I say, to, to me, this one, okay, well, yeah, okay, that sounds nice. But, you know, there doesn't seem to be anything objectionable in it as far as I'm concerned. If, if anybody here feels strongly otherwise, I think we would say, okay, sure, fine.
And, and the reason that it's good that you, that you vote at the meeting is I, I have experienced where something looked totally fine to me and then you get in and you hear the conversation in the room and all of a sudden, oh, well, I didn't think about that in that situation, you know. I mean, it may be fine for us, it may be devastating for another system and you won't know until you hear the conversation.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess my only concern is like the vagueness of the word innovation. You know, it's a buzzword, but doesn't really mean anything. And then I just wanna make sure that it's not something that's exclusionary.
Now, do we wanna vote against anything that's not specific enough that we completely understand it? I mean, we could.
No, I'm just, well, I'm just saying, like, when you, like, like Jean said, when you come to this discussion, it would be interesting to hear what that comes to. And if, you know, my touch points are, if it's exclusionary, it's not innovation, so. Okay.
Number two, establish a statewide health insurance benefit for school employees. So this was obviously one of the more controversial things that the legislature and the governor were looking at last year. It's pretty, you know, this one, I think, is a lot more concrete. We, we know what the governor would like to see here. And so the question is, is, is this something that we support? Obviously, it would have some impact on future negotiations, cost of health insurance and that kind of thing. You could certainly argue that, you know, if something like this were to be implemented, it would take some level of control out of our hands. That might be either good or bad. So, you know, how do people feel about, about this particular item?
I guess I feel like we learned this time that there's a chance that the state's gonna take control of this and take it out of our hands. Because through all of our negotiations, we always use both healthcare and salary to work out our, our settlement. And I, you know, it's all a question of how much of that are we willing to give up?
Well, arguably, we kind of had to give it up because they then passed a, you know, 80/20 thing. So I, I don't know. If we're gonna have to give it up anyways, I'd rather kinda do it willingly or at least on our terms.
Well, I mean, I think, yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
So it, it looks to me like you're going through the PowerPoint versus the resolutions that are in the back of the book a few pages after, am I correct?
Uh, we're going through the resolutions that are in the packet under 7.4.
Are you on page 18 of the document?
Yeah, we're on page 18 of the document, yeah.
Okay, the resolutions that start on page 23, that's full language. And they're in somewhat different order, so before I made my comment, I was just checking which ones you're going through. So, um, this one, the purpose of this resolution was to make sure that the school board were represented at the table when there's any kind of negotiation to the state.
Okay.
The process for negotiation of healthcare. The process for negotiation of healthcare benefits.
Yep.
Maybe as a fifteen would be just because the, that there were school board, school board, the directors understand.
So the operable language there would be the process for negotiation of healthcare benefits at the state level by a council of school board members.
Yes.
Yeah.
Which makes me wonder, is that the SBA or is that, is it the?
The call base, they've already started something or they've had some discussions. The call base, as the executive director, has been participating in the SBA board. I don't know, there was a meeting between the regional meeting and this current date.
Okay.
Sorry to interrupt.
No, 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 no.
So I guess it then, from what you're saying, Colleen, it's not even a question of do we favor this or not, it's do we think school boards should be at the table somehow?
Yeah, yeah.
Sure.
And the other piece about these resolutions is they're not, there's nothing binding about any of these. It provides guidance to the SBA and the SBA board in their advocacy.
Yep.
I guess I'd be okay with this one just because I think in principle, school boards would have more leverage collectively than individually.
Yep. Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Okay.
So the next one is about a state-funded retirement buyout.
Uh, establish equalized pupil staff ratios first.
So I guess it's, well, it's, it's out of order.
Okay.
I, I don't know, I'm sorry, I take that back. Create a task force to target equalized pupils. So that's just recommending that a task force address that issue.
Yep.
Sure.
Sure, why not? Next one is, is again establishing a stakeholder task force about a state-funded initiative in support of early or on-time retirement. To, you know, my, my own feeling on that one is I, I'm against it. I, I think that this ends up being a gimme. It ends up being an entitlement to every program that we've ever had discussions of, you know, in our contract negotiations, there, there's been no willingness on this, on the part of the association to grant us any sort of discretion and who gets offered these. And we did have once upon a time in this district or in the combined, you know, districts, a, you know, what, what was quote unquote, an early, early retirement program that basically everybody got. And it gave them like one year of salary, you know, split over three years when they retired, but it, it didn't change anybody's behavior because everybody got it. They, they retired when they want to. It doesn't allow you to go tap somebody on the shoulder and say, hey, I think it's time and we'll ease your transition with a couple of bucks. So I, I'm, you know.
It's just a task force, all right?
If they, if they want to, yeah, I, I don't, well, again, me personally, I don't even want to encourage this. I, I think it's the wrong path to go down. I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to see my tax dollars granted. It might not come directly out of our budget, but it would come indirectly out of our budget.
I don't know, another way of looking at this, so if you read the second bullet, there has to be a commitment to meet staff-to-student ratio targets by reducing total personnel and a commitment to sustain new savings through future budgeting processes. So it could be a way for people to realize more savings sooner if they're able to get people to retire as, and then not replace. So the way that I read this is you have kind of maybe a top-heavy school and you're trying to get people to retire and not replace in order to meet other budgeting targets. Like, since it's just a task force and it could allow, I, I don't think it's necessarily applicable to us here in CBSD, but I could see it maybe like smaller, more rural areas where the retirement of a couple, you know, senior staff could make a big difference in the budget.
So again, it, it ends up, in my view, being an entitlement. It doesn't allow, you know, there, there are some senior teachers who we'd be thrilled if they kept teaching and there are others, maybe not so much, where we'd, we'd like to see them retire early or, as they put it, on time. But it doesn't give you, these things.
I know, it's not discretionary.
Tend not to give you any flexibility or any discretion in, you know, in, in who gets it and who doesn't. Why do I want to incent one of our best teachers to retire early when, when we, you know, that's not what we want, but, but they, you know, could receive that money whether we like it or not. I, I, you know, I want to be forced in this position.
I hear what you're saying, Russ, I was just trying to present the other perspective for maybe smaller areas. It's just a task force, so, mm-mm.
Well, for record, I'm with Russ.
Okay, fair enough. I can go either way, I'm just trying to think of other perspectives.
Can I?
Yeah, speak.
Can I interrupt?
Go ahead.
So another piece of this line, and Russ and Joan, as you, as you have this discussion with the, at the annual meeting, one of my concerns would be the language of state-funded. So is it, is it the state or does it come out of the education fund?
Where do you think?
Buy your lottery tickets.
So where, where does the money come from? That would be my question.
Well, I'd, I'd be willing to bet it's the state ed fund. They're, they're not, they're not pulling this out of the general fund. Joan's nodding her head.
Yeah.
You know, it, it might be poorly worded or not specific enough, but I don't think anybody should sit here and think it's coming out of the general fund.
Right.
If, you know, something like this, I don't think that's what anybody has in mind in this.
In a situation where, where we needed to make some changes and that was an incentive, to have an open-ended incentive isn't as much of an incentive. You know, I want to retire this year or next. I'm going to stay five more years, but if I only have a three-year window to get this benefit, then I'll make my, my plans around it. So again, open-ended and state-funded education fund is, is not something I, I would look at, but we can, we can listen and see. If you trust us with the information that we get, maybe something will be informative that we're not thinking of now or whatever.
So the next one is really focused, again, on contract negotiations and the information that fact-finders use when they're, you know, doing, doing their fact-finding and come back to the two negotiating parties with, you know, a bunch of statistics that supports, you know, one position or another or says, okay, these are the, the various contract settlements, these are the things that would impact your settlement. In my experience, they, it tends to be this situation where they're just looking at other contracts that are settled in this county. It doesn't look at, you know, things like the rate of inflation. It doesn't look at, you know, what people in the private sector might be getting, even what, what state employees are getting. So I, I do think this one is interesting. If the, you know, state were to come up with a set of standards that says these are the things that have to be addressed in there, you know, again, as I said earlier, the devil's in the details, but this one, I think at least, you know, would be interesting to, to see how it progresses and whether it's something that we ultimately would end up supporting.
I think this is interesting because, you know, we've had two local towns just flat out reject the fact-finders and is it, this something where this work would improve the work that the fact-finder did or should we just not even include fact-finders in the process?
Well, you have to, I mean legally.
Maybe we should.
The law is that you have to include them and then you're free to accept or ignore it.
Yeah.
And, and certainly recently, two, two communities chose to ignore it because they probably felt that the factors that were considered, or either the factors that were considered were irrelevant or they left out a bunch of factors that they felt were relevant and weren't considered.
Yeah.
So if, if this were done properly, it, it wouldn't leave those things to, you know, it wouldn't leave them up in the air. They'd say, these are the things you have to address.
Yeah.
The only thing that I have hesitancy on is it's only a statutory list, like you couldn't have anything not on this list. That's, eh, it's a little binding, but if they had a guidance list, that would make me feel a lot better.
Well, it's, it's a step in the right direction too.
Yeah, I agree. I totally agree.
It's like Dave said, make it more relevant so people don't just blow it off.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
And then the last one is looking at guidelines for reserve funds and budget surplus amounts. You know, I, I guess our, our guidelines, okay there if we've got flexibility. I, I think in, in this district, we've always done a, a pretty good job in managing and utilizing our surpluses. You know, this is one where, you know, do we want the state telling us how we have to handle that? On the up.
Not, not how to use it. I, I don't mind guidelines, but I don't want them telling us how we have to use our reserve funds.
Yeah.
I think our auditors give us best practices more accurately perhaps than, than something like this. I don't know what the thinking is behind this. We, we take seriously our audit recommendations and they are people who do educational institutions. So I, I don't know.
So remind you that all of these came as a result of a meeting of the leadership of SBA and VSA at, last spring.
That's right.
And so every one of these might have like a few people sitting in the room going like, this would be a way to cost, to bend the cost curve, right? And in this particular ones, there were people in the room who could tell horror stories about somebody that they knew who did some ridiculous thing, so that's how it ended up here. So for us, it kind of looks like, huh, you know, like, well, maybe this is intended to have everybody behave the way you guys behave, right? So that's the thing, when you have a process like that, there are different ones that are going to resonate with different people. There are probably 30 ideas by the end of the day that were on the board and then everybody got to vote on five of them. These are the ones that got the most votes. And the question was, which of these do you believe has the best chance of bending the cost curve? So that's the intention behind all of this. This one in particular is one that I don't really know. I just know that there were people there who told horror stories about how people are using reserve funds.
Well, and, and, you know, guidelines are all well and good, but if they're just guidelines and people are free to ignore them, then, you know, what, what has really been accomplished with this? I, I don't know.
Unless it's just districts where this doesn't, because it's not like a super-hot topic, you know what I mean? And it can get lost in the, kind of the footnotes and it maybe just, the best practices, somebody in the committee could raise it and say, look, you guys aren't following best practice. We'd like to see that with your, I don't know.
Good.
I, again, I, I think that to some extent, this one's innocuous enough and probably doesn't affect us in any great extent.
Right.
All right. And that's Thursday and Friday or just Friday?
Thursday and Friday.
Thursday and Friday. Some crazy stuff going on down there at Lake Maury Thursday night.
Like you were saying, at the discotheque.
Yeah. Gyron, this is worse.
At Lake Maury Discotheque. All right, so we move on to action matters. Can I get a motion to approve the personnel actions?
No.
I am.
These all come recommended as soon? Read the paperwork? All seem reasonable?
They do. New, new hire, Charlotte Health Educator, just 8.2 and two leave of absences revolving around the attorney that are both supported by administration at the building and other supervisors.
Okay. Any other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So 8.2, taking a motion to ratify the recent agreement for support staff?
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, there's, right, so is there anybody else who would need to withdraw themselves from this discussion slash vote?
My wife's a teacher, but it shouldn't affect.
Yeah, so, but we have in the past, Eric's wife is a para and we didn't let him, we
let you discuss but not vote on the teacher contract, is that right?
I don't think he was on for like executive sessions, but he could vote.
Wait, say that again, I can't hear you over here. What's happening?
Just trying to decide if anybody needs to abstain from voting on the ratification of the support staff healthcare.
Oh, right.
And I think it's just Eric, but I just want to make sure we're following best practice.
Thank you.
I think in the past, staff or, or support staff or faculty, if there's any connection, we didn't, Erin left one time, she's a teacher in a totally different district, a former Charlotte member, we did not have in the room. Eric walked out of that room when we were talking there. I think for the person themselves, you know, I would recuse myself to have no, no.
But, well, I think that was just executive session in advance of an agreement.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, Eric, Eric clearly can't vote on this, but he, I don't think we have to kick him out.
Right. And I don't think, I don't think.
You know Mark, but.
Yeah. Yeah, it's an open meeting. I sent some information about this earlier this week. Russ, do you want to talk about it first?
Sure. So the, the reason for this is there was a re-opener in the contract with the support staff. When the contract was originally agreed to, there, you know, the, the changes to healthcare were anticipated, so this re-opener was put in there because of the changes that have come about in the contract doesn't expire for at least another year, maybe two years. We had to address this with the union. So we had discussed this, the HR committee, and agreed that Mark and I would try to get a meeting with, with the association and with David Boulanger from the Vermont NEA. We're trying to get this done quickly because we've got open enrollment coming up and wanted, you know, the, the, these employees to, you know, know what they were going to have to sign up for and give them time to be educated on it and to, and to make decisions. So we met with David and a couple of representatives from the association last week and reached a tentative agreement with them. And so the, there's different classes of employees. Some are full year, others are just part year or school year employees and so they are sort of put into separate categories. Everybody who is eligible for the HRA gets the same kind of 595 doughnut that we did for the teachers. The, the share of the, that they pay of the, of the premium is different, though. So for the CDHP, the gold CDHP plan, which is kind of the, the benchmark, I guess, at this point, for the full year employees, they would pay 11% and we would pay 89%. It had been 10 and 90, so there was a, a point movement there. For the part year employees, we agreed to a 30/70 split, 30% for the employees and 70% for the district. That had actually been 40/60. I'll, I'll remind everybody that these are, are, tend to be our lowest paid employees so that, you know, and, and there's not a lot of them relative to the teachers and not a lot of them, even fewer of them that, you know, take advantage of these plans. So, you know, Mark looked at the numbers and basically this ends up being a win-win in that our expenses go down and their expenses go down, at least in the first year of the, of this plan. Anything I missed or that you want to add?
No, that was actually a very close one.
So any questions, comments, concerns?
Just a quick question.
Yep.
How is their prices going down if they're paying a higher percentage, overall cost of the plan decreasing?
Yes, yes, that's the whole, the gold C D, the, all the healthcare plans across the district, across the state for education are changing this year, prompting this whole healthcare, I'll call it a crisis. Healthcare change that we're seeing in all, in all the districts. Changing to high deductible plans for the most part, and that's part of the H R A piece here.
And Russ, I can't remember if you mentioned this, but we're renegotiating this next year when we renegotiate with the teachers, so.
Yes.
So it runs through, well, I mean, they basically got a year and a half left in the, in the current school year. It, the contract would expire in June of 2009. Both contracts expire June of 2009.
So we're renegotiating both next fall.
Yes, yeah.
Woo! Yeah, I can't wait, man. That's going to be a party.
Okay, any further discussion? No? Hearing none, all in favor of ratifying the agreement? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? One. Okay. So, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, remind everyone, the next meeting date is November 7th for the community forum. We're going to meet here to go over an overall presentation and then we're going to break out into individual towns. And we'll have instructions on that in an email prior. And there's a finance committee you guys are meeting the next night, is that what I see here?
Yep.
Go over the budget.
And then, important to note, our next regular meeting is November 14th because the third Tuesday of that month is Thanksgiving week. So, we're meeting on Tuesday, November 14th here for our next regular meeting. Okay?
Find everybody.
Yeah, that's right. Okay. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second. We're adjourned. Thank you, Colleen.
Hi, Colleen.